The October 6, 2025 legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Ms. Ledbetter will lead us in the indication. Please rise.
Please pray in a manner consistent with your beliefs, as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. We gather here tonight in service to our community, to listen with open minds, to deliberate with fairness, and to act with wisdom and compassion. May our discussions be guided by respect and a shared commitment to the common good. Grant us clarity in our decisions, humility in our disagreements, and perseverance in our work for all who call this county home. May our efforts tonight strengthen trust, foster understanding, and lead to outcomes that lift up our community. Amen.
And Ms. Fiedler will now introduce some guests we have this evening?
Yes, I have from the Broadneck Peninsula Cub Scout Pack 2214 will be leading us in the pledge, if they could step forward. And we also have from Councilman Smith's district, some other folks who he will introduce.
Yes, and if we can also have Scout, Cub Scout 445, if you can come forward as well. And I know there's one member from 446, just want to give a shout out to him. He's in the same scout organization as my son, so I had to give him a shout out. And where's our, I did ask you, what was one of the things that you wanted to tell us about the scouts that you thought was amazing?
Camping.
Camping.
Oh, there's one.
Sir?
I'd say that there was some pros and cons in some camping, particularly at the time we went, there was a lot of rain and I was spending a lot of my time in cold grass, so my feet got wet, basically all day.
So we know he's going to be a legislator. He's able to debate an issue all day. With that said, well, if you all, you two groups can lead off the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are all.
Thank you all.
It's kind of, thank you all. We appreciate you coming out and helping us start our meeting off. So we will now hear from the Maryland Association of Counties President and Queen Anne's County's Commissioner Jack Wilson and Executive Director Michael Sanderson for their annual presentation. Gentlemen, come on up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council members, for the record, Jack Wilson, Queen Anne's County Commissioner and this year's 2025 MAKO president. And with me tonight is our illustrious Executive Director from MAKO, Michael Sanderson. So you are stop 18 on the worldwide Maryland tour we're on. We started out in kind of a flurry, had probably eight counties right out of the gate right after session, and we kind of led into that with what happened in session and pretty much left all eight counties very depressed when we left. So we kind of, when we got back into visiting counties again, we kind of switched gears a little bit. So Michael's going to give you a bit of a look back at session, but he's going to concentrate more on things coming up in this next session, some of the things that are still hung over from the last session, but all in all, we want to leave you with, in a much better mood than the first eight counties we visited. So without further ado, Michael?
Thank you all very much for the time this evening. I'm Michael Sanderson, the Director of the Maryland Association of Counties. We advocate on behalf of all the services county governments provide to every Marylander, do work in Annapolis, try and educate and help guide our members and so forth as a nonprofit on your behalf. So distributed a packet of stuff, which is sort of our want, and then I usually like to deliver, not going to go through the packet in a whole lot of detail, but just stay high level. Want to talk about a handful of policy issues, starting with the last legislative session into where we are now, and focus on things that are still relevant and wide open going forward. So let me speak to fiscal issues for the moment. They're kind of big in a number of ways, and state decisions affect an awful lot of your ability to meet your priorities and deliver for your residents. So that's part of where this conversation typically starts. A tough year, this last legislative session in Annapolis. I think we were here before you last fall talking about how grave the fiscal situation for the state budget might be and saying, if it's a billion dollars, that's big enough to require serious actions. And things swelled to a number much bigger than that. It was a $3 billion problem by the new year, and in a state budget of $25 or $26 billion, that's enough that you can't nip and tuck your way out of it. It took a lot of difficult decisions, some new revenues and taxes and so forth to get the state budget under control for basically a two-year window. They took some dents in local governments, counties in particular. I know when you all put together your budget for this last year, you found on the order of 11 or 12 million dollars basically spoken for to cover holes created by state-level decisions. As an aside, just as an observation politically, this is a challenging spot for us in county government. If the state says, we'll continue to do the function, but just have the counties pay for it, that's a whole different mechanism than, we'll make a budget cut. If they need $100 million out of the county governments, they could have just said, we won't fund your health department anymore, you fund that whole thing. But that's a terrible headline. That's turning your back on public health, and it would look like a bad policy decision. But instead shifting $100 million of costs that are, well, it's an increase in cost in the state pension system that goes for our teachers, and it's kind of connected to county budgets, and we invoice the county for almost $100 million of that, that's harder to understand. The people who get the pension still get their pension, the service is still being delivered, it just comes out of your budget and each county's budget. That's almost catnip for a state fiscal leader, right? So don't love that direction, and we saw more of that than before out of this cycle of fiscal distress. Where we sit now is sort of soft sands. The plan from April in Annapolis was, let's get through two years and then we'll see where we are. If the federal budget reconciliation had been really harsh on the states in the middle of the summer, that might have triggered a bring everybody back to Annapolis for a special legislative session and solve a billion-dollar problem. Doesn't look like the federal fallout is that immediate or quite as sharp. We're probably going to see more costs on administering former federal programs land on the state, but it may take a year or two or three before we feel all of that. And also before we feel service recipients in Maryland end up being challenged to continue receiving their services. So the effect on us politically and budgetarily and in the Maryland economy is kind of pending. As we know, we're in a federal shutdown. Maryland is the most directly affected state by the federal workforce, and so there's another question mark there. But again, even if we end up with, who knows, 20, 30, 40, 50-day shutdown of the federal government, typically the federal employees end up being compensated for the time that they were furloughed or sent home and whatnot. That's usually what happens. Now, what usually happens doesn't necessarily happen the next time, so there's uncertainty there. Some counties are actively stepping in to try and support, provide bridge loans and other things like that for their local, you know, federal employees, and I think Anarundel's positioned to be thinking about that sort of thing as well. Maryland's going to be affected by this. How much of that is programmatic and at the local economy level remains to be seen. What I think we probably see is a budget for this coming year that won't require those sort of drastic measures in the 26 year, the early part of calendar 26, but the sailing gets choppier just one more year out. In particular, the state has an education trust fund that has built up a balance. The voters with the constitutional amendment said, we're going to take casino money and some other dedicated revenue, put it into an education trust fund to play for the, pay for the blueprint, the big 10-year ambitious plan to enhance our schools and get more out of our public education systems. The state has been paying for their share of the blueprint out of a piggy bank. Piggy bank runs dry, not in '27, the budget they cut next year, but in '28, the budget they cut the following year. So suddenly, the blueprint costs will land in the state general fund, and it probably projects to be another $2 or $3 billion problem. We don't have the pinpoints there, but it's going to be another fiscal circumstance a couple of years down the road for the state. So we'll see what happens. This relationship with the state and local governments is always fraught with, they ask a ton of our counties, we're the ones who lift up many of the services that our residents respond to and rely upon. The state invests a great deal in counties to get things done, but then when their budget gets weak, they look to counties as participants in that difficulty, and that's an easy thing to forecast. So some troubling times a little bit ahead. I mentioned the education blueprint. I will say, we're still, depending on how you count either in year four or maybe year five of the big rollout of a 10-year plan, there's a big milestone ahead, and that is when the legislation passed to create the plan, there were a number of markers, let's do some studies on how things are going. We've been making investments, are we getting the results in our schools and in the programs that are being built up by the blueprint? That's supposed to go on during the year of 2026 and be a report by the end of '26, again, to land in time for action before the legislature in 2027. So again, the story is probably not a big year this year for sort of a close look and a deep accounting of where are we with the blueprint, but rather a year or so away. I would imagine the '27 session is probably when they start seeing both dollars and functions under a closer view. I'll mention a couple of things that are adjacent to fiscal issues, but I think are important and worth mentioning. One is housing policy is going to be a hot issue in the General Assembly this year. There were a number of efforts to pass big, broad bills on trying to promote affordable, attainable housing across the state. Depending on whose report you read and how you measure it, we are certainly tens and tens of thousands of units short of where we objectively ought to be, whether that's 80, or 100, or 140,000 is like pick a report, but everybody seems to agree that we're short on where we would like to be. How do you get from here to there is a function of a lot of things, some of which are kind of outside of the control of government. Having interest rates come down, so mortgage rates instead of 6.5% were back to 3.5% like they were several years ago, would certainly help a ton, probably more than any bill we could pass. But I think we will probably see legislation that deals with a number of things, including local approval processes, permitting and zoning approval and so forth. I think it's likely we see meaningful housing legislation passed this year, and what that looks like for local processes should be a compromise. I don't think we want to be obstructionist toward progress, but we also want to make sure that community input is still part of the planning and zoning process, as I think, generally speaking, it ought to be. So there's a fine line to be walked there. That'll be a high-profile issue. It'll affect your county, many others in the central part of the state and in the rural part of the state in different ways, but it has an effect everywhere. And I'll close with one more issue that is kind of ancillary to county governments, but it's going to be, I think, primary in the political dialogue for this coming year. Energy issues are just white-hot right at the moment. We're kind of in the middle of a perfect storm, if you will. America kind of took some time off. We haven't been in the generation building business in the 80s, 90s, 2000s. So the number of power plants just being built and established so we can generate enough supply for the power grid, we kind of relied on generation from the 50s, 60s, and 70s. You end up with a facility like Brandon Shores scheduled to be mothballed at a time when, the second part of the perfect storm, there's a massive spike in demand for electricity. The advent of artificial intelligence and high-density data users, the sort of data center sites, is the trending thing, and it's making a hockey stick out of projections for how much energy we need in Maryland, in Pennsylvania, in the multi-state region that we're part of. And basically, America's never seen anything like this dating back to the advent of window-unit air conditioning. Data centers are changing the whole game. And all this is happening at a time when Maryland has been pretty aggressive in saying, energy policy, we want to advance clean energy, we want to see as much as possible, if you're going to be a deliverer of energy in this state, we want to see it come from solar and wind and clean renewable sources, and that's just an added pressure on an already challenging environment. It has been pressure for, put solar on everything that used to be soybeans, it's been pressure on wind energy in different places where that's controversial, it's been, we can't mothball an old facility, it might have been scheduled to go out because we can't afford to do without it in the multi-state grid, and the demand just spikes from here. The last capacity auction for the PJM grid, there was a negotiated agreement that the cap would be a 28% increase, and the first bid was 28%. There's no actual negotiation, it's just firewalls right now. So what's happening with people's electric bills is going to affect them in the pocketbook, and you all have constituents and residents who are on fixed income acutely aware of that issue. That's not, it doesn't feel like a state government or county government issue, but when residents are that concerned about it, it's going to be front and center in Annapolis for the General Assembly this year. What exactly happens there, I don't know, and how much it has effect on local planning and zoning or other things like that, I don't know, but you got to put a pin in that as be ready for a lot of attention on energy policy. I've skipped lots of things, some of them are covered in our packet, this is material from our Conduit Street blog and materials from our podcast and other media and so forth, but probably the best use of your time is, what did I miss? What should we dig into further, and what else is on your mind? Happy to hear from you all.
Mr. Sanderson, thank you as always for the overview. So just if I'm following along correctly, sort of overlaying all of the bills coming due in the 2027 General Assembly session and the blueprint finally getting the results, both of those, if you overlay them with an election calendar, are going to be after the 2026 election, when everybody in the General Assembly has just been up and has told you all the things they're going to do, and now all of a sudden, the bills are going to come due, and then they're going to have to decide what they do. So obviously, that's concerning to me, because the time to raise taxes, the time to try to do new revenue streams is going to be in the first year of a four-year election cycle, because for everybody, you say, well, if I do it now, four years later, people won't remember, and that'll be when I'm up for reelection again. So I just am hopeful that MAKO is very strong on that, even in 2027, when we get there, recognizing that. I just am making that point for the people who are watching, to make sure you understand that's how they structured this, right? It was done on purpose. I also wanted to make the point about Brandon Shores, because that's in my district, right? And I am deeply concerned about what that's going to look like when that goes offline. But my question more to you is this, so I've met with BGE, and they have shown me where, if Brandon Shores goes offline, and if they do have to bring transmission lines down from Peach Bottom, which is in Pennsylvania, and bring the nuclear power in, they're going to have, I have a spot in my district that's CSX-owned, that's about 120 acres, they're going to have to clear 60 acres of that to be able to build the transmission station to then ratchet down that power and be able to distribute it out. And I've gone out, I've looked at the site, and I think it's one of those things where people have no clue what's coming, right? I mean, between the electric bills, between what there's going to be sort of forced to do, you're seeing this in Carroll County, a lot of these places where they're trying to bring some of these transmission lines in. So I guess my question with all of this to you is, what's MAKO doing on this? Because it's really impacting the county, and we aren't able to stop any of this. This is all state-level policy, some of it's even national policy, but it's being pushed down on us. So what's MAKO doing on that?
First of all, I absolutely agree with you that the distribution infrastructure for power plant, for power, electric power, is the underappreciated part of the sort of crisis in energy that we're in the middle of, or maybe at the beginning of. People seeing their bill go up is easy to understand, people get that. Folks in Carroll County, when they have 1,000 people come to an open forum held by their county commissioners, and most of them say, please vote no on this, but the reality is the Carroll County commissioners have no real capacity. They can pass a resolution saying, we don't want this huge transmission line to carry power from Pennsylvania to Northern Virginia for their, you know, for their data centers, with no particular benefit to the places in Maryland that are going to host the facility. So we've been active on this, our National Association is active on this, but it is a tough game, this is more than a road game for us. Like, it's for us to engage at the state legislative level or with state agencies, we know that terrain, we know how to do that. Trying to engage with the seven-state region PJM, who kind of calls the shots for the whole capacity of the grid, is just a different game for us. So we've had PJM leadership, we actually had the Executive Director on our podcast a couple of weeks ago. We're engaged on this issue, but it, I'll be candid with you, it's a different game than we are used to playing. So we're on it, but I don't know how this goes, and I don't know where the toothpaste goes. If Maryland were to squeeze really hard in the middle, you still need that power in Northern Virginia from someplace, right? So I don't want to be too optimistic in saying, we're going to tackle all this stuff top to bottom. We're active though.
Ms. Raffey?
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I was going to ask about transmission and...
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Got another question. So in your packet, you have the opioid case and the challenge to that and the Supreme Court, and it looks like they argued this last month. I haven't followed that personally. Any updates on that? Have we got any indication of where the court's going to go, of what that looks like?
So it'll be months before we hear a full resolution. The case, actually, Anarundel is the spearhead on a case that has really significant repercussions. The short version is, this is about the ability to sue opioid distributors, manufacturers, and so forth for the harm they've caused to our communities. The legal argument, I will do my best, I'm not an attorney, but I'll try and carry this in the like 45-second version, the legal argument that the federal courts have said, we need to hear from the Maryland courts, what does your state law say about nuisances? And in a lot of common law, nuisances are like, oh, well, this house has a pond, and no one's tending to the pond, and it's full of mosquitoes, and the property has become a nuisance. Can there be a nuisance claim on something that's not attached to one address or to one piece of property? That's the question before the Maryland courts. I think our, we have outside counsel working on this with, along with Anarundel County. We're optimistic that the Maryland laws will support, that this nuisance claim makes sense, but this is going to be essential for getting resources to continue to fight the opioid problem in Anarundel and across the state. And it also has consequences for what might be the next fight, which is forever chemicals that are probably in our water systems and in our landfills. And there probably is a similar philosophy about whoever dumped the stuff in the landfill should be the one to pay to remediate the problem, as opposed to all the ratepayers and the water users and so forth. And without a nuisance claim, we might not be able to pursue those in the same way. So this is an issue bigger than opioids. We're grateful that Anarundel has taken this seriously, has retained outside counsel, and is like taking this on very aggressively. We're all in this together.
Mr. Smith?
I'll be quick. You mentioned the, and it's good to see you again as well, but for MAKO, just one tidbit to add to the crisis that's happening with the furlough organizations and employees. History has shown us that, yeah, traditionally, they will get that, especially the civilians and the military. I'm also, want to make sure you guys look out for the small businesses, that after the furlough or they pass an appropriation bill, those small contractors who depend on government sort of activity, they won't get the ability to have their resources re-enabled, and so they're actually going to lose funding, and so that obviously will have a trickle-down effect with local economies and, you know, folks who own grocery stores, things like that. So make sure MAKO was also looking at services that can help them, because they will certainly be in a weird position if this is elongated, you know, for months and months and months. It's going to have a significant impact on them.
And my experience in the past with that, I've done a ton of government work, is that they'll get suspended, but they will get re-initiated, and typically, you don't get hurt that bad by them. It's just basically a timing thing where you've got employees you don't want to lose, and you have to find another place to put them for that extended amount of time, but typically, the contracts are fairly safe. It's just, again, retaining the employees you got and the ability to pay them through that time, so.
But that typically is the bigger effect on the Maryland economy and in Maryland communities, is the town gown, more so than the actual federal employees, and that's underappreciated as well, so very good point.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. So today in the Supreme Court of Maryland, and I only know this because I know people who were there watching it, there were arguments on the climate change case. I don't know if you paid attention to that, but dismissals from both Baltimore City and Anarundel County, and they've been appealed all the way up to the Supreme Court, who's hearing that. Is that something that MAKO is following too with like resilience authority and what funding may or may not be involved, especially for counties like ours, which are shoreline counties? Because I'm not particularly optimistic that those lawsuits are going anywhere in light of what I heard about today's argument.
So I will say, two-part answer. Generally speaking, MAKO as an organization, we have intervened as an amicus participant in a number of different cases, including the opioid case you mentioned previously. We have put in a brief on that case. There is a local government law center that's run sort of jointly by the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, the National Conference of State Legislatures and so forth. Basically, state and local governments pool together on federal cases where they have better footing than we do. So on federal issues, we mostly defer to our colleagues at the, with the national Big Seven local government organizations. That's just, it's been the most effective way for us to be heard in courts. So NACO is engaged on those issues, and the issues in Maryland are similar but not identical to those in Louisiana or Alaska or other places and so forth, but I know they have been active on this too.
All right. Any other questions or comments? So I think that does it. Thank you all so much. We appreciate it. That was, you covered a lot in a small amount of time, Mr. Sanderson. He can get into it good, so we appreciate the overview. Thank you so much. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone and attendants, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received 11 pieces, which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. So our first six, Marcia Altough, Greg Altough, Mikey Altough, Tim Soderstrom, Nate Brown, and Paul Vannick. If you're here, please come on up. All right. I don't think everyone's here, so I'm going to go ahead and call some additional ones. Kyle Nimhard and Jignan Patel. And y'all can go ahead, go ahead and get started. Go ahead.
Thanks so much. Good evening. My name is Paul. I live at 508 North Farm Crossing Road in Severn, Maryland, and I'm here to bring up a parking, proposed parking ban in our subdivision. So our core point is that the county appears to be operating inconsistently with a published standard, DPW 2501. It states that one-sided parking on streets that are 28 to 36 feet wide is allowed. We have been trying to get somebody to examine the situation and adjust the ruling as it is, but we have been receiving responses saying that parking would jeopardize health, safety, and welfare, and it doesn't appear that the standards are being examined. Our interpretation is that it seems, seems as though, instead of looking at standards... but we have been receiving responses saying that parking would jeopardize health, safety, and welfare. And it doesn't appear that the standards are being examined. Our interpretation is that it seems as though, instead of looking at standards, there's some subjective interpretation being done. And we believe that instead of instead of just stating that something would jeopardize health, safety, and welfare, the standard should be examined and our case should be heard. So, our request is just that the appropriate authority would look at our developers' plans for parking and rescind the ban to allow one-sided parking on our street. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hey, thanks for your time today. My name is Tim Soderstrom. I'm here about the same issue. My address is 502 North Farm Crossing Road in Severn. And so, yeah, our core issue is that we feel the Office of Planning and Zoning is not applying their own published standard, DPW 2501, equitably across the county. The published standard says to have one-sided parallel parking, it needs to be 28 to 36 feet wide. Our street meets that standard. When we raise these concerns, as well as the developer, to the Office of Planning and Zoning, they're largely going unanswered. And yes, they are anchoring their core claim on, quote, "jeopardizing." If parallel parking was allowed on the street, it is, quote, "jeopardizing" "the health, safety, and welfare of the residents." That's really all the answers we're getting. We're not getting any more analysis, justification. Those asks are largely being ignored. Within a couple miles of our neighborhood, there's multiple neighborhoods that have streets that are less wide. The standard is not being applied. They have no parking restrictions, or they have one-sided parking. One street is five feet shy of the standard, and they have no parking restrictions. A fire engine would not, it's a dead-end road. They don't have any turnarounds. They would be more restricted in that neighborhood than ours. Yet, we are getting a total ban on parallel parking. The nearest on-street parking is almost 600 feet away. It's not realistic. It's not a trivial issue, and it could depress the housing values in our neighborhood. All we are asking is that the Office of Planning and Zoning apply their standard equitably across the county. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Nate Brown, and I serve as the pastor of Discover Church right in Brooklyn Park, Maryland. In addition to my ministry or to the ministry, I work nationally as the owner of House Sweet the Sound, the world's largest gospel music competition. My work includes securing television and streaming deal with major broadcasters such as Fox and national syndicated networks. I've led productions all over the U.S., including Constitution Hall, London's Royal Albert Hall, while partnering with major brands like Procter and Gamble. Now, I share this to say, when I'm committed to something, I see it through excellence. And now, I'm fully committed to Brooklyn Park, Maryland, the community where God has placed me. Though our church is less than a year old, we meet at Park Elementary School and have already welcomed over 80 members from the community, more people than the school average PTA meeting. That tells me our neighbors are searching for connection, for hope, and for help. But the numbers tell a deeper story. Brooklyn Park, the median income is well below the county average, and many families are underemployed. Our community has officially been designated as a food desert since the closing in 2023 of a major grocery stores. Families have been left with cornered stores that lack affordable, healthy options, and crime is nearly 40% higher than the national average. While small grants have supported housing and arts, very little has gone towards food access or workforce training and things our residents are most at need. That's why we are launching Discover Hope, an initiative to provide workforce training courses, expand mobile food distribution, as well as offering programs to suffering families. We're asking that the county consider dedicating funds in '27 in fiscal 2027 budget so we can expand these initiatives. And we look forward to working with Mr. Smith and all of you all here as council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Yes, Ms. Patel.
Hi, my name is Jigna Patel. I'm here to, I live in Sun Valley, Maryland. I'm here to talk about the Nixon property development. And the thing I actually want to talk about today is setbacks. So, earlier this year, the council passed Bill 2025, and part of that bill was that workforce townhouses would follow normal townhouse regulations. And at first, I thought, okay, no matter what happens with the Nixon property, at least we'll get a 75-foot setback, because that's what normal townhouse regulations are. And so, when the developer submitted the subdivision application, there's only a 30-foot setback. And so, I reread the code, and I called Planning and Zoning for clarification. And the code says that there is a 75-foot setback, except that the setback may be 30 feet if the adjoining lots are open space or is located in either the same or more intense zone. However, workforce housing increases density without changing the zone. So, even though townhouses are a more intense density than the neighboring R5 lots, because the zoning doesn't change, the 75-foot setback doesn't apply. If the same exact development was being built, but the land was actually zoned R10, the 75-foot setback would apply. So, historically, density bonuses didn't really exist, so your zone was your density. But now, with density bonuses, there are like larger variations between the word "zone" and the word "density." So, I really actually just want to know this council's thoughts on that. If we're building workforce townhouses in existing R5 communities, should we get that 75-foot setback? Because the zone is never going to change, because workforce housing doesn't require a zoning change. But the density and style of the housing is changing. You're going from single-family detached homes to higher-density townhouses.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Mr. Nemhard.
Kyle Nemhard, Glen Burnie, Maryland. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the county council. Good to see you all again. I know you all are probably asking, since we came up here, "What is he doing with that stuffed cat on the table there?" I actually borrowed this from my daughter this afternoon, and I promise this will all come full circle. I borrowed this from my daughter, and she asked what it was for. And I told her, "Well, it's a little icebreaker inside joke between me and the county council, just a little fun." But I promise I'll bring this full circle. So, I had the pleasure, after the last hearing on Bill 7225, of speaking with folks who were both in favor and opposed to the bill. And I was encouraged to see that there wasn't as much of a gulf between the two positions as I thought there would be. I think there was a mutual understanding about everyone's concerns, and I do believe that there is a solution out there. I do feel like there were some missed opportunities. It occurred to me that the real substantive dialogue really didn't occur until the night of the hearing. I did have the opportunity to see the work session, and this being the first bill that I had a chance to actually see work through the process, I thought there'd be more dialogue during the work session, but there wasn't. It didn't really start till the night of the hearing. And I felt honestly that the bill wasn't giving the appropriate amount of dialogue that I felt it deserved. But I do appreciate it being put on the agenda for the work session. And again, Councilman Volkey, I appreciate you for introducing that bill. I think collectively, I was just a little disappointed that the county council did not give Councilman Volkey the opportunity to rework the bill after the dialogue that we did have amongst each other, which I thought was very productive, good cases on both sides. And I think it would have been a good gesture on the part of the county council if Councilman Volkey was given that opportunity to rework the bill, especially given that we had over 50 men and women who came from neighborhoods like Freetown and others like Ms. Patel and mine, on buses in some cases, that sat through several bills, including one that had seven amendments on cats, if you all recall. They powered through that. And so, I thought it would have been a good gesture if they had that opportunity. But I'm running out of time, but I do want to thank you for entertaining myself and Jigna, and look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Nemhard. If there are anyone else who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name and address and topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. So, thank you all for who are here. Sir, you can go ahead.
My name is Bill Sherbo. 1252 West River Road, Shadyside, Maryland. I'm here as the president of Anarundel County Watermen's Association to remind you that your decision back in June on the Discovery Village property is not going down well. And I had a chance, and I hope everybody in the room had a chance, to look at your meeting, when you were haggling over the fate of the property. And I was a little discouraged that months earlier, you had voted on the Small Area Plan for Region 9. And if you had read it, you would have known where Discovery Village was. You would have known how important water access is to the economy of that region. But the other discouraging thing was that in the process of going back and forth with your facts and figures, Chairman Hummer brought up that Parks and Rec gave her the information that less than 100 people use that property a year, which is totally wrong and laughable by everybody in our region. And because of that, we are with other community groups. We are going to be formally filing for information requests from Parks and Rec. We're going to find out who gave the chair that bogus number. We're going to find out who put the number to somebody that gave it to her, right on down to the person that put the supposed counter on the ramp. Because we are not happy. Thanks. And I have some reading material to, from some of our friends that are going to be, might want to read it.
Thank you, Mr. Sherbo.
Thanks a lot.
Mr. Minahan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council. Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, Maryland, Chair of the Growth Action Network. Growth Action Network has a new slogan that you're going to hear a lot from us over the next several months. "Let the Voters Decide." I'll talk more about that in a moment. We've spoken with most of you about the shortcomings of our land use legislation in the county. Some of you have agreed, some have not. But we encourage you to let the voters decide on the creation of a planning commission for the county. Of the 24 jurisdictions in the state, 22 have an independent body, a planning commission, that reviews land use legislation independent of its council. Anarundel is one of only two that does not. The members of these bodies typically have experience in land use, real estate, construction, development, environment, and other disciplines related to land use matters. What do planning commissions do? Well, there are different variations on the theme. Some have approved deny authorities, but most are advisory. Some review all code changes and text amendments affecting land use, and almost all invite public testimony. And that's what GAN is proposing for Anarundel County. Recently, the county and county executive have introduced bills that are long, very technical, and hard even for engaged citizens to penetrate in order to fully understand. The planning commission that GAN is proposing would be comprised of members with expertise in the areas related to land use. It would invite public testimony beyond what's possible here at the table. It would make an advisory recommendation to the council based on public testimony and the members' expertise. A change of this nature will probably require a change of the county charter, and that's where "Let the Voters Decide" comes in. There's a lot more to this idea we'll be sharing over the coming weeks. We thank you very much and look forward to the day when we can have this meeting in hybrid format.
Thank you, Mr. Minahan. Mr. Shea.
Concerning Discovery Village, the elected leadership of both parties have had a bipartisan deaf ear and managed to thoroughly and universally upset all of South County citizens, regardless of their party, starting with the county executive and his hands-off, the steering wheel leadership that allowed department heads that have never designed, built, and run a modern community center in South County. The needs have not been expressed for 25 years in planning documents and receiving nothing but excuses and promises that were not kept. Discovery Village could and should meet our demonstrated diverse needs of community center boat ramp with slips. It was the exact spot described in our recent District 9 Small Area Plan that Bill describes. We now do not have a suitable county boat ramp for South County. Citizens now, thanks to the vote of Councilman Ledbetter, before she eliminated our community boat ramp for our watermen and recreational boaters, she should have visited the site, which would have been the first time, and talked to the users. The community struggle did not have to happen. The county could have met all of our needs by exercising the option to purchase it for $2.2 million for the 13-acre parcel, for the protected harbor at the mouth of the West River with scenic views and buildings on site. But the words of the county, it did not meet our standards. Well, you do not have community center or boat ramp. You have no standards. Shannon Ledbetter should exercise and expedite her plan to leave office by resigning now.
Mr. Shea.
What?
You're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Still moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the legislative session of September 15th and the closed meeting minutes for September 15th, 2025.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 6:00 PM. On a motion by Ms. Pickers, seconded by Ms. Rodbien, the motion to hold a closed session to discuss a personnel matter was passed. The council reconvened in its chambers for the legislative session at 7:06 PM. It was opened with an invocation given by Ms. Rodbien, and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. A closed meeting was held on September 15th, 2025 in accordance with Section 3305B1 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland to discuss a personnel matter. Chair Hummer opened the meeting at 6:05 PM. It was held in Room 143 of the Anarundel Center in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the legislative session of September 15th and the closed meeting minutes for September 15th, 2025?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the legislative session of September 15th and the closed meeting minutes for September 15th, 2025 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 8325, An Ordnance Concerning the Authorization of the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery by Anarundel County, Maryland, the county, from time to time of special taxing district refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12,360,000 to be secured by special taxes to refund all or a portion of the county's special obligation bonds, Anarundel Gateway Project Series 2014 taxable, the determination of certain terms and provisions in connection with the issuance, sale, and payment of such bonds. Bill Number 8425, An Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems. Bill Number 8525, An Ordnance Concerning Purchasing, County Governments Transition to Zero-Emissions Leaf blowers, Leading by Example. Bill Number 8625, An Emergency Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Employee Relations, Police Captains.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2725, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding for the Dragon Science Building. Resolution Number 2825, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding for the Floristino Building. Resolution Number 2925, Resolution Requesting the Department of Inspections and Permits to Develop a Forest Conservation Manual to Serve as a Guidebook for Property Owners and Homeowners Associations Who Maintain Forest Conservation Eastments on Their Properties. And Resolution Number 3025, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Permit All Authorized Employee Representatives to Enter into Binding Arbitration to Resolve Labor Disputes Relating to the Terms and Conditions of Employment.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6725 as amended.
Bill Number 6725, An Ordnance Concerning Flood Plane Management, Erosion, and Sediment Control, and Stormwater Management, Clearing, and Pruning.
Madam Chair. Yes. Madam Secretary, can you please add me as a cosponsor to Bill 8625?
Noted. Yes, thank you, Ms. Feedler.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, could you also add me as a cosponsor to Bill Number 8625 as well?
Yes, noted. Thank you, Ms. Feedler.
Ledbetter.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ledbetter. My apologies. I know who you are.
So, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Eric Michelson, our senior environmental
With me at the table, I have Eric Michelson, our Senior Environmental Policy Officer and Deputy Director of the Bureau of Watershed Protection Restoration; Raghu Badami, our Assistant Director of Inspections and Permits; and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. Bill 6725 has been discussed at a couple of prior meetings and at a council work session. Just to remind everyone, this is to clarify existing county practices with regards to tree trimming or pruning, especially in the critical area, buffer and steep slopes. It creates a habitat enhancement plan and a vegetative management plan. We have a couple amendments to discuss at the appropriate time, but for now, I can turn it over to Eric if there's anything he wants to add, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Eric Michelson, Senior Environmental Policy Officer. Nothing to add other than that the additional amendments that we have here are the result of conversations that we've had with some folks on the council and hopefully will be relatively agreeable.
Is there any discussion? All right. We will now open the hearing, public hearing, on Bill Number 6725 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the...
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. We have one person signed up ahead of time, Fletcher Thompson. And if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6725, you may come up at this time as well.
This is now the third time this bill has been presented to the council. There has yet to be articulated a reason for it. No problem has been identified that this bill addresses, nor has it, nor has it been discussed how this bill will solve any problem. The only, I would hope that if anybody, if any of you intends to vote for it, that you identify some reason, some problem that you think this bill will solve and how it will solve it. And if you don't do that, you will simply make my point for me that this bill is not designed to address any problem. I would further state that, again, that the reason advanced by the county executive as to the need for this bill is fallacious. This county, this council has never, ever given the, the executive branch the authority to regulate tree trimming. And if you listen to the way he worded it, it says to clarify county practices. That's what they're doing, not what the law says. They just did it. When this matter was presented in court, Judge Thompson of, no relation to me, of this circuit court, said that the county's argument amounted to tyranny because they were making up the laws and not enforcing them. I would submit that that should be a matter of serious concern to all of you. The county has never, was using the words grading and clearing to regulate tree trimming. Those words do not advance, or regulate tree trimming. They regulate activities that are not encompassed in this bill. So this will be the first time, if it is passed, that you will do so. I would hope that you would protect water views in such a bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Don Deverese, I'm authorized to speak on behalf of Sherwood Forest on this legislation. I indicated the last time we met to discuss this that Sherwood Forest supports the legislation because, primarily because it utilizes ANSI standards, which are national standards that can be utilized to determine what is proper tree trimming and what is not. And that is, that's primarily what drives our support for this. And I don't think I need to elaborate any further other than to make an observation that you might not be aware of. Both Mr. Thompson and I are neighbors in Sherwood Forest. And I think it's, it's in light of our national political environment, I think it's, it's a good commentary that the two of us can come here today and disagree and nonetheless still remain good friends. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Steve Miller, and I live at 613 Samantha Court, Annapolis, Maryland. Bill 6725 has been substantially improved with the addition of the amendments that you discussed during the last council meeting and several more that will be brought up tonight. But I would ask you that you take one more step, and that's to remove the $75 fee for the vegetation management plan and the $250 fee for the habitat enhancement plan. Bill 6725, as described by the administration during your council work session, is to help waterfront owners better manage invasive vegetation in the critical area of buffers so that they can preserve the water views from their property. But I would say that the majority of people who submit VMPs and in the future HEPs are doing it because they're either taking down hazardous trees that will affect life or property, but often it is to go out and to tackle invasive, invasive vegetation in their forest conservation easements and preserve the long-term health of trees. Now, there's nothing in the code that requires them to do this. There's nothing that requires the developer during the period of development to go out and to help remove some of these invasives or even to take down hazardous trees according to today's county code. The county should be grateful that HOAs and other organizations and individuals will go out on their own initiative and on their dime, use either contractor support or more often volunteer support to manage invasive vegetation, and again, preserve the health of the forest. Now, $75 and $250 might not sound like an awful lot to many people. But the thing is, is that neither in the fiscal notes, legislative summary, or the council work session was there enough evidence presented to justify these fees.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. So, y'all may have a seat. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak on this bill? The public hearing on Bill Number 6725 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6725 as amended.
Bill Number 6725, Inordinance Concerning Floodplain Management, Erosion and Sediment Control, and Stormwater Management, Clearing and Pruning.
Okay. There are three amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eight.
Amendment Number Eight. This amendment modifies the definitions of clearing and pruning.
Okay. This is the administration's amendment. Mr. Hunt.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So this amendment just clarifies that clearing includes trimming of trees and vegetation that's not, not authorized as an acceptable pruning practice. And it also takes the definition of pruning that is in ANSI and just takes that language and puts it right in the code so that folks can see what the definition is.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt?
Rodvian, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? No one? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Amendment Number Eight has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Nine.
Amendment Number Nine. This amendment requires the department to provide reference materials and guidance upon request.
Okay. This is administration. Mr. Hunt.
Sure. I'll chime in. Eric Michelson, Senior Environmental Policy Officer. We added this language at the request of Ms. Rodvian, just to make it clear that there is, given the reference of the ANSI standards in the legislation, that the county will provide that information. I mean, I think it was understood, but it's important to have it clarified here, and so we agreed.
Okay. Is there, may I have a motion to adopt?
Rodvian, so moved.
Do I have a second? Did we get a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you going to charge for this?
Raghu Badami with inspections and Permits, no.
Okay. I'm only asking because I have, right now, going back and forth with a constituent who's trying to get information about something that the Office of Planning and Zoning is doing and IMP. And I just was in communication with the Director of IMP and discovered that for them to get the information they want, they will have to submit a FOIA request because IMP will not give it to them without a FOIA. And so I just want to make sure that we are, I think that's nuts. I'll just say that on the record. But I think that for this, I want to make abundantly clear, you all are not going to be charging people to give this information, like this is a helpful guide that you're going to have out for free somehow. So, as long as we're good on that, I'll support this.
Yes, the, we, the department would not be charging for this. We look at this as a part of the public education and outreach. Somebody can walk up and ask for the information.
Okay.
We would not be giving this out. Somebody can walk up and take a look at it.
Why not just put it on a website so somebody can get it for free? Why, why do I have to walk up and get anything? Everything's online. Right? So couldn't I, aren't you just going to put it on your website so people can download it, sort of like your deck building guide, which I think is a good guide, like same kind of thing?
I think this question came up. This is an external document that the county is not allowed to publish, and I would let Kelly speak to this.
Sure. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. To the extent that the department creates some kind of reference guide or something internal, they could certainly put that on their website. If, with regard to the ANSI standards, that is a copyrighted document that we can't just allow access to without looking into the copyright issues that that might bring up, because that's not our document, so we can't provide access or copies to that, of that document.
So we just passed an amendment that said people have to do their tree trimming in accordance with a document that we can't give them because it's a copyrighted document. And so they're going to have to come to IMP and sit in the office to know how to trim a tree? I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I think that's nuts. That's why I just voted against that last amendment, because it doesn't make any sense. Because like, these people aren't going to be able to get this stuff. And then we're going to fine them for not doing it.
Well, and I believe, I won't speak for IMP, but I think that they, part of this amendment would allow them to put together a reference guide that IMP would create that would incorporate some of those things from ANSI. If someone wanted to read ANSI front to, front to back, they could come to inspections and permits or purchase that, that document. We can't provide that whole entire document. It's a copyrighted document. We don't own that, that document.
But we're telling people they have to comply with that. Like, we're saying that's the law, but we can't give it to you. We can't show you what the law is. If you want it, you're going to have to buy that thing. And if you are really that interested, you can come down to IMP and sit there for a couple days and read through the whole thing and become an expert on ANSI. Like, it just, just doesn't make sense what we're asking people to do. Like, this is to trim your trees. So I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. Now that I understand it correctly, I feel even better about my vote on the last amendment.
Mr. Smith.
In reference to the 25 and the 250 fee, what, where, what metrics determine that as the baseline for, or not 25, whatever the amount, 75, 75? What metrics determine that that was the appropriate fee for someone submitting a vegetative plant? And, and to caveat that, one would agree that these vegetative plants are good for, especially in that critical area, they're good for the environment, good for those communities, correct? So making, creating a barrier where it's, it's, on the financial piece, where it's, it becomes a, a fee specific, like what, what generated that number?
Raghu Badami with inspections and Permits, that's what's based on staff experience and reviewing how much it, time it takes to review a plan. So $75 at least covers the staff administrative cost to begin with. It does not cover the whole inspection cost or the site visit cost, but it at least covers a portion of the staff cost.
Do, do we anticipate the workload to be like an, an FTE or something like an entire position that we're trying to, if, if the workload is going to be increased, potentially we create another position that can remediate or handle that, that workload? Is that the intent with the revenue? I think it's, what, 100 or, I think you said something, right around 100,000 or 75,000 that might be generated, at least on the, the funding bill, that it might generate? Is, is that enough to hire a position that'll be working on those?
Not, not at this time. So currently, the department does provide for the review of vegetative management plans. They do currently happen. We do not currently charge any fee. So the bill provides charging for a fee for those plans. There are, the department reviews about 1,000 to 1,100 vegetative management plans per year. For the habitat enhancement plan, that's a brand-new plan. Right now, anybody disturbing area or needing to remove vegeta, invasive management would have to go through the grading permit process, which is a more expensive process in terms of the engineering fees, the plan review fees. So this just provides an alternative streamlined permitting process. We anticipate getting about maybe 30 habitat enhancement plans per year. So we currently do not have a vehicle for that at this time.
And so if they didn't have that, they would have to do the grading, you're saying?
Yes.
And the grading is, is much more expensive?
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the ANSI document, my understanding is that the ANSI standards is actually a massive document that covers like many, many subjects. Is that, am I understanding correctly? I've never had to use it because it's not my field.
It, it is. And in our experience, some of the pruning standards are really nuanced, and we do not anticipate a homeowner attempting to, to either pruning or some other vegetative activity on their own. And the folks that are licensed to perform these activities are well, well versed in ANSI standards, and they are required to use those standards by either their licensing or other means. But one of the things that we do see is homeowners and asking basic questions is, how do I do this? So I think that's where the education and outreach for the department helps out.
So just to follow up on that, if we are looking at the part of the ANSI standards that deals with pruning and tree trimming, it's a, probably a very tiny fraction. Is it fair to say that's a very small fraction of the ANSI standards, ANSI standser, sorry, say that 10 times fast. ANSI standards as a whole?
Yes, it does cover other standards in addition to pruning.
But my point is that it's a very small part of the overall ANSI standards. Is that fair to say?
I have Nathan Markline here, he's a county forester, maybe he can chime in on that?
Nathan Markline, Code Enforcement Administrator, when, formerly with the Anne Arundel County Forestry Program. So I actually have the ANSI A300 standards right here. These are the ANSI tree care standards. It's approximately a 149-page document, but it is much smaller than the overall ANSI that does cover industry standards for most of our industries throughout the United States. And to the question of would somebody necessarily absolutely have to come down to the county to read this, my personal thought was no, that we could have a few copies of these in the office, and then as our foresters are meeting with residents, whether it's a pre-submission site meeting, we can bring this to the field. If somebody requests it, we can bring it to the field and have those discussions with them at their property, looking at their trees, and go over that education and outreach portion with them so they do not have to travel to us.
Madam?
Yes. Go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up. Would it be possible, for example, I guess, talking about the A300 volume that you have there, even that, how much of that is related to tree trimming standards and pruning? Just ballpark that again.
Maybe 10 to 15 pages of it, because it covers safety aspects for the workers as well.
Okay. So, like worst-case scenario, Office of Planning and Zoning could possibly maybe scan, you know, five relevant pages for a constituent that needed, you know, to look, or wanted to look at the exact language of the law and possibly, you know, send a PDF through email? Is that a possibility?
You said it was copyrighted. You said it was copyrighted.
But five pages.
Yeah. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I'm not a copyright attorney, so I can't say that for sure. We can certainly look into what our options are. I, I do know if you Google ANSI, you can get different, you can find it online. I've found it myself, so it is, it is available online.
But there's sort of pirated copies that are online.
They are, they are, but they are available, and so that, that's another method as well.
I think, okay.
We can certainly create a guidance document that incorporates a lot of the, that's really what I was envisioning, is that IMP would create a guidance document which would use the, the standards in ANSI to summarize... the standards in ANSI to summarize what somebody's allowed to do by using those terms.
Okay. And I'm obviously not a copyright attorney either, but I think usually a small portion of a document is fair game, you know, for
I believe so.
for informational purposes. You're not going to be selling it or anything like that. I vaguely recall this is, in the educational world, that is what we are allowed to do.
Right. I think it is a very small portion, so I believe that is correct.
So I was trying to give some comfort to my colleague who, you know, and hopefully another path to make these standards available when, you know, technically, we probably don't want to say to our constituents, yeah, go find a pirated version. Or, you know, the guide, the guide online, I think is, you know, probably a great way to go.
Right.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to recall the amendments that we passed at the last meeting. Is this the first amendment that, the one that we just passed, that added reference to ANSI? Or was there another one?
Eric Michelson, Senior Environmental Policy Officer. The original language in the bill just referenced ANSI standards. So this adds sort of the lay definition in addition to the explicit reference to ANSI 300, because one of the issues that Councilwoman Raviyan had raised was that, you know, most people aren't going to know necessarily what that is off the bat, or what pruning is off the bat. And so this expanded definition essentially adds that.
Madam Chair. I'm not suggesting we do this, but I'm just curious. I understand that there is a copyright for the ANSI document, but if we took language from that document and incorporated it specifically verbatim into the code, would that be copyrighting if we're just using the same language?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. We did look into that. ANSI is pretty technical, so it would take, you know, however many pages, he said, eight to 10 pages of very technical tree cutting criteria that would be really out of place with the rest of the code. So I think it would not really be consistent with the way that our code is, the very technical, you know, tree cutting criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volke.
No, no, but thank you. I appreciate you trying to give me some comfort. Mr. Smith and I were talking. I'm going to ask the question that he and I were discussing. Is it possible to buy a license of some sort so that you can have the ANSI document, put it up? Is that an option?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. I just made a note for myself to look into that. I'm sure there are those options. Again, I'm not a copyright attorney, but I'm certainly happy to look into that. I'm sure there's, there has to be a way to make that available without having a pirated version or some other issue. So we can certainly check into that.
We have the International Building Code, which we reference, but people can get that easily. Like, they can go out and find it themselves, you know, the International Residential Code, all those things that we incorporate. But if we're incorporating something that people can't use, like they can't easily go access, that feels to me like a big problem.
Right. Yeah, we will certainly look into that.
And sort of taking out Xerox copies, while I appreciate that idea, as a constituent, you know, thinking about it from the other side, not as a legislative, that doesn't give me a lot of comfort. Like, oh, here's the Xerox copy. Okay, great. Well, then when I get fined, I'm like, oh, I relied on the Xerox copy. And they're like, oh, I don't know where you got that. I've heard this story before, okay? So just saying. With the grading permit, I am curious, is, I thought grading permits were only required if you were disturbing more than 5,000 square feet. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So when we talk about people needing grading permits for doing tree work, when would that arise? Are you looking at canopy coverage, or are you looking at actual site disturbance? Because clearly, a stump on one tree is not 5,000 square feet. If you clear lots of trees, that could be 5,000 square feet. But if you look at canopy, canopy on one tree could be much bigger. So what are you all assessing when you're looking at a grading permit and making that 5,000-square-foot measurement?
So for the purposes of habitat enhancement plan, invasive removal, it's the expansive ground cover, is it through under the ground or through the canopy, it does require either disturbance to land cover and ground cover, which would require a grading permit. It is beyond 5,000. So one of the things that we have done in the past is to kind of phase it in a way not to be able to do it, but that's not an easy or more streamlined process on either side.
So I guess, but still, the question I have is, is it canopy coverage or is it ground coverage?
Actually, it could be both.
That's what I thought, because I have constituents who got in trouble for clearing like one big tree that you all have measured out and said, oh, that goes over 5,000 square feet. And then they're coming to me, and they've been hit with like $50,000 fines, and they're saying, can we fix this? And I'm like, yeah, sure, I'll talk to IMP. And I've talked, and the result is, well, can't really do anything. Sorry, it was in the critical area, or it was in a forest conservation easement. So got to pay fine. And also, you have to do this replanting at like a three-to-one ratio, which is an absurd number of things that you have to plant. Like, I don't even know how you physically put that many shrubs into one place. So that's my trouble with all of this, is that I went along with 2019 when we did forest conservation and that whole situation. But I've seen now, years later, some of the negative repercussions from that. And my concern with this is the same concern that I have for the sidewalk bill when we get there. I just don't trust that you all are going to be able to exercise any actual judicious, like, thought about this. There is just so much rote reading of the code that's like, well, the code says this, so we have to do it. And there's really no way around it. That's concerning for me. That's where I'm struggling with all these bills that are imposing these new requirements on people. So I mean, feel free to give me back where I'm wrong.
So this actually makes it easier for somebody to try to clear invasive, remove invasives, or where either the clearing has been over 5,000. Right now, it's either vegetative management plan, which is 0 to 5,000 or 4,999, or 5,000, you have to get a grading permit.
Right.
Now, this provides a pathway for forestry-related projects to be able to not go the grading permit route up to an acre, which invasive removal does need that much amount of clearing and
I have invasive in my yard, so believe me. Like, I've got Kudzu, I've got Oriental Bittersweet. I fight it all day, every day. My neighbors are probably thinking I'm crazy, but I'm always out there hacking it, trying to save trees, because it wraps around those trees. I've had big pine trees yanked down because of it. So
Are you in compliance with the code, sir?
I'm not in a, I'm not in critical area or forest con. And I've checked, I've checked.
Calling him out.
So, yeah. But thank you for confirming. And I did, I took down trees a couple years ago, and I had IMP, because I wasn't going to end up on the front page of the Capitol, give me in writing that I did not have to have anything. So, but go ahead. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
So this, we have to go through creative means to be able to do these type of projects right now. And we, the department thinks that there has to be a better way to, and it's not great that we have to phase a project which could have funding repercussions. I don't think when you submit a grant application or when you go to somebody, I think getting a permitting is a first piece that has to be a part of any approval. And it doesn't look right when somebody says, I have to divvy it up because I don't want to get a grading permit. So that just allows the right, the forestry projects to be able to use the habitat enhancement plan to, which is an alternative to a grading permit.
All right.
Are there any other comments? Mr. Smith?
I do have one comment. For, on your website, for the fees that we have associated with various mechanical grading, things like that, the 75, is there, would you be okay if it was just a six net? Because I know one of your lease fees is like $69 for a grading permit. And that seems to be, for this new effort, it's not going to make, I think, a significant alteration in the work that's required, because those people, unless you're hiring new people, they're still going to be required to do, whether it's this evaluation or not, they're still going to be evaluating. And the 69 just brings it to the level that other light permit fees is at, instead of the, that 250 for the vegetation plan one? Would that hurt you if it was a lower fee? Like $69 based off of your, say it again? Yeah, or zero. I mean, really, the fees generate 97,500 based off of the report that you, the funding report that came out. So if it was a lower fee, would that impact your ability to work this process, this new process?
So we are not looking at the fee as a means to generate the revenue, to be able to cover some of these, but we are looking to make sure that there is a fee for these type of applications, because we have never charged a fee. And the department is providing a service, and there should be a fee. But we are open to discussing that internally to see.
Well, just know the bill doesn't have a lot of legroom on it. And so if it's not modified tonight, it's not modified at all. So would you be okay with $69 if, because that's the For both? Can you, Meredith, could you go and bring the amendment out? Thank you. That at least brings it down to where, if you look at the fiscal note, I don't think you're going to be significantly impacted. You can do the math. There were 1,230 estimates in that projection that you sent, 1,000 for the middle one, 200 for one, and then 30 for the other one. So this, I don't, I don't think this significantly alters that. Just do 69, 1,200.
Madam Chair.
I just want to say, that's Can we finish one amendment?
Yeah, that's not the amendment we're on right now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right.
So we will
Point of order, my apologies.
Yeah, let's get, let's get this one done, and then we can move on to the other.
I do agree.
Does anybody else have any comments on this amendment, Amendment 9? Okay. It's coming out. The accent's coming out a bit tonight. So, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 9.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Amendment Number 9 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 10.
Amendment Number 10. This amendment removes fees for habitat enhancement plans and vegetation management plans.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we've heard, that the department has been reviewing the habitat enhancement plans and vegetative management plans, and not having these fees has not impacted their ability to do so. I will say that this is a circumstance for me where I feel like folks who have a forest conservation easement or are in the critical area and are trying to do it right, you're looking at, say, you're removing one tree, and that's a protected tree. It's been there for a long time. It's going to be $1,500, around that, if you're lucky. So then to see in the process, oh, now I have to pay $250 for an enhancement plan, or $75, it's just, and we don't even have enough information out there for the general public to understand what they're supposed to do. I've talked about the forest conservation easement in my backyard. I've been looking at the code for seven years, and I still have to call and make sure that we're doing it right when we're filing to do something on our property. It's the reason I introduced Resolution 2925. I think before we start adding fees for folks to pay to do the right thing, we want them to do the right thing. We want to incentivize them. But adding a $250 fee to something we've already been doing, to me, is not incentivizing. So that is the impetus for the amendment, and I move the amendment forward.
Second.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hudson for the administration. I'll just point out, we haven't been reviewing habitat enhancement plans because they don't exist yet. That is what this bill creates. We would prefer that the fees stay in, because those cover the cost of, at least a portion of the cost of the staff time to review these applications. Either way, the reviews will get done. It's just a question of where that money will come from.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I still say that when someone is going through these processes that are not inexpensive without applications, to see a $250 fee, a $75 fee, it just adds up. And we don't even have all of the information out there for folks to realize how to do it properly. Who, they want to do it the right way. They don't want to get penalized. And these fees feel like a penalty out of the gate.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Don't we currently have a fee for some sort of vegetation management plans? Because I deal with them in my, in my district with the Forest Con. Isn't there a fee already that's been administered for a long time?
Correct. It's not on the website. I'm not an expert in this. Again, I think there should be some manual out there. I'll defer to the department.
I agree on the manual, but I feel like I have constituents that are maintaining their, oh, I guess it's maybe to abandon a forest conservation easement. Okay, that's what I'm, maybe that's what I'm remembering. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volke.
Thank you. So I am looking at the fiscal impact, and you all are currently doing grading plan review. You're currently, are you doing any vegetative management plan review? You are. So the only thing that's new in here is the 30 new habitat enhancement plans. Is that right?
Yes. That's what we anticipate on an annual basis.
I got you. So that's going to generate 7,500 bucks. But by throwing the fees on these other two, where you're doing 200 grading plans, you're going to raise 15 grand. And by doing it on the 1,000 vegetative management plans, you're going to raise 75,000. So the vast majority of what you're raising is off of stuff you're already doing, right?
Yes, which we currently don't have any fees for.
I got it, I got it. But you're saying that you're doing all of it with existing resources, and you think that what you're going to add is this $7,500 total in terms of cost, if you will, well, strike that, in terms of 30 more applications than you're doing now. And we're going to raise $97,000 to cover what is basically $7,500 worth of new stuff. This feels really disproportionate to me, that we're coming to people. I took what Councilwoman Fiedler was saying. I mean, you want people to do the right thing. We're already doing this work, but now, we're going to find a way to like tie it all together where we say, well, we're going to get the money for the things that we're already doing. We're going to get that too. That's going to put us all the way at 97.5. That gives us a new FTE. We might be able to justify in budget next year that we come in and ask for another position now, because we're raising so much extra revenue. You don't have to answer that if you don't want to.
No, I was just going to say, I think, I, we do see vegetative management plans based on the amendments that we had, where we, up to 2,500 square feet, allow not requiring a vegetative management plan within Forest Con easement, and also not requiring within 15% steep slopes. We will probably see some drop in it. The other thing we might probably see is some of these vegetative management plans that are currently submitted to get around the 5,000 square feet, would actually be bundled up into one nice habitat enhancement plan. So we do see that drop in.
This just feels like a revenue generator to me. Maybe it has some other components of trying to manage invasives and manage, you know, sort of forestry initiatives, but it feels like a revenue generator. When you look at the fiscal note, it's hard to get around that.
That's not the primary purpose of the bill.
Are there any other comments, questions? Ms. Pickard?
So the administration opposes this amendment. Is that what I'm to understand?
Prefer it not be adopted, correct?
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 10.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Amendment Number 10 has been adopted.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before, oh, when you're ready, before we move on to the next bill, I just wanted to
Okay. Bill Number 6725 is amended, will be heard on October 20th, 2025.
Wait, don't go anywhere.
Ms. Raviyan?
Yes.
I just would, actually, don't go anywhere yet. I wanted to ask this at the beginning, but I just didn't quite get in in time. I just wanted to clarify, because I know we've had questions about what the purposes of this bill is, and it kind of states it in that opening section, at least somewhat. But, you know, erosion, if you're losing trees on, you know, near the water, you're losing roots that are holding land in place, right? So the idea here is to hold on to the trees so we can keep the roots in the ground. I mean, obviously, trees by themselves are a nice thing, but the roots, particularly with respect to erosion, is important.
That's correct. I think, you know, one of the issues, again, the heart of this bill in terms of where it came from was this dispute, or insured forest originally, where there was manipulation of the trees going on that was being done in a way that was threatening the viability of those trees. So it's not simply trimming off a few branches, and then there's an objection to that. It's trimming trees or pruning them or cutting them in a way that is going to potentially risk them eventually dying and, like you say, you know, making soil exposed, especially on steep slopes or within the critical area. And so we just want to ensure that that kind of activity is being done in a way that is preserving those trees, can be done to preserve water views and that kind of thing as well. But that's being done in a way to preserve those resources and making sure that there aren't issues in these particularly environmentally sensitive areas. Yeah.
Thank you. Can I just follow up? Thank you, can I just follow up? Very briefly. Another thing is that we have some real threats to our tree canopy in Anarundale County, but really, region-wide and in some ways nationwide. I, I, your department, I believe it was your department, in March 2023, put out an entire report about the decline in oak, and different red oak and white oak, and how there are a whole range of threats, and we're seeing, you know, a die-off. And I, I know there's experts here that probably can talk more eloquently, or, you know, with more detail than I can about it. But I feel like that's probably part of it too, you know, because we have these other threats to just make sure that we're doing what we can to protect our tree canopy, and to make sure that we're not killing trees because we're just cutting them in a way that, you know, increase, or hastens their death.
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I'm not with inspections and permits, but both Raghu and Nathan are. And I think maybe historically, and this gets to Councilman Volkey's point, there's been kind of a perceived antagonism that the county's looking to crack down on people who are doing these activities in the critical area. And what I'd say is that, and Nathan's been in his role for a relatively short time here, really, the, the attitude is one of, like you say, education, it's trying to make sure that folks who, who are fortunate enough to own those wonderful properties are looking to the county as a resource to understand these, like you say, these diseases that may be afflicting trees on their property, or how to manage these trees in a way that they're not threatening property or safety, and that they are able to stay viable long-term. And so I, I know it doesn't necessarily always seem like it, but the goal of this bill is really to add some clarity and around a whole host of these kinds of issues, and to create an avenue for the public, when they are dealing with these kinds of things, to come into the county and to work cooperatively with county staff who are trained in these issues to preserve and protect those resources.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification, I know that's been a question that, that's come up, and I figured a little bit of discussion wouldn't hurt, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to support the conversation here, I, I do, for a matter of public record, want to mention Mr. Markline because I had a constituent in Severna Park who is on the water and had a tree, and wasn't certain what he could or could not do. And I know you went out there and really assisted him, and gave him the attention and a direction that he needed to go. So I will support and acknowledge the fact that the county does step in and guide. We just need to have more resources out there online to make it easier. So, appreciate the conversation around this topic.
All right. Now we will move on to, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6825 as amended.
Bill Number 6825, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Zoning Animal Rescue.
All right, Mr. Hunt?
All right, Ethan Hunt for the administration, with me at the table I have Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney, Claudia Roll, our director of the Department of Animal Services, and Lynn Miller, our assistant planning and zoning officer. Bill 6825 has been discussed at a couple prior council meetings. It creates a definition of animal rescue and allows it in certain areas of the county and certain zoning codes. We do have two amendments that we'll discuss at the appropriate time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Is there any discussion from the council? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6825 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6825? Okay, we do have some folks coming for the audience. So, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record, remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Ma'am, you may go right ahead.
Good evening, my name's Marion Hosmer, I live at 976 Lee Road in Crownsville, Maryland. I'm a member of the Animal Welfare Council. The Animal Welfare Council continues to support the Bill 68-25 and tonight's new amendments. Bill 68-25 with the amendments provides measurable standards and safeguards that will define what a rescue is in Anarundale County, while it also protects neighbors' properties with reasonable zoning requirements. Rescues that abide by these standards ease the space limitations of our county shelters by giving more animals a safe place until they are adopted into a home. The Animal Welfare Council supports Amendments Eight and Nine. Animal Welfare supports Amendment Eight as it is reasonable to exclude livestock and fowl on property used as a farm. This Amendment Nine, the amendment clarifies that there is not a requirement for a person to live on the property. The current language in the bill is somewhat confusing, and this amendment brings clarity and removes confusion. On behalf of the Animal Welfare Council, we urge you to support and vote for Bill 68-25 with tonight's amendments.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. So seeing no other movement for that, the public hearing on Bill Number 6825 is now closed. So, Madam Secretary, please read the title, Bill Number 6825 as amended.
Bill Number 6825, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Zoning Animal Rescue.
Okay, there are two amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eight.
Amendment Number Eight, this amendment exempts farms from the animal rescue licensing and zoning requirements.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. This is just to clarify that farms that may give away or receive animals are not animal rescues, that's a normal part of farming. They take in animals all the time, they give away animals all the time. We didn't want to get into a situation where someone was making an accusation that a farm was an animal rescue and needed to be licensed and inspected.
Got it. So, may I have a motion to adopt?
Second, Ledbetter.
Okay. All right. Just a quick question, we do, we don't inspect and license farms, but if there is a complaint about any animal neglect or issues, your, your shop would come out, wouldn't they, Ms. Roll?
Definitely, yes.
So, all right, is there any other discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. So I'm looking in 181-101, subsection 58, farm means land used for farming. So when we are talking about what constitutes a farm, is that the only definition that we have in the code?
Kelly Kenny, supervising county attorney, I think Lynn and I are both, I think underneath farm, there are then a series of definitions.
Farm alcohol production facility, farm dual-use, farmer agricultural heritage site, special event, farmer agricultural heritage site stay.
Right.
Farming.
Yep.
Agriculture, agroforestry, forestry, animal and poultry husbandry, aquaculture, on and on it goes.
Like farming is the word that you really want to look for to encompass the all-encompassing, what, what happens on, on a farm generally.
Okay. So just understanding this amendment, this amendment specifically says does not apply to a person who keeps livestock or fowl on a property used as a farm, as defined in 181-101 of the code. Okay.
And then a farm is defined as land used for farming.
Okay.
And then farming is defined.
And you all feel that is sufficiently tight enough of a definition that you will be able to regulate this? Cool, all right.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Eight has been adopted.
So before we go to Amendment Number Nine, I have a question, because I saw a little something online about a kangaroo in the county, and I just wanted to get an update on what a kangaroo status is. Is that an exotic animal? So.
This has nothing to do with this bill, it's just we have animal services here, so I'm getting clarification on the kangaroo in the county.
Claudia Roll, Animal Services, yes, we do have a kangaroo in the county, the kangaroo's doing well, and we're working through the state health department for permitting.
Okay, so we don't have like a county permit for kangaroos?
We do not.
We do not?
We do not.
And so, I mean, I, I would guess that kangaroos aren't considered dangerous animals, it's not like a tiger or something, but.
They could be.
Well, they can kick you.
They could be dangerous, depending on the situation.
Okay. So, so, okay.
I will keep you posted, though.
You what?
I'll keep you posted.
Yes. And have y'all ever had a kangaroo left at Animal Services?
We have not.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
What, how would you, where would you put the kangaroo, as opposed to?
Well, that is why the kangaroo is stayed where it is, it's doing fine, it's well-cared-for. While we work through the permitting issues, the kangaroo doesn't really need to be with us.
Okay.
It's better off at home right now.
Thank you for indulging my little side comment there, I just wanted to check on the kangaroo status. So, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Nine.
Amendment Number Nine, this amendment removes the requirement that a dwelling on the property of an animal rescue facility be occupied by at least one person involved in the operation of the animal rescue facility.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, as the folks from the Animal Welfare Council suggested, this language was confusing folks. I know the senior dog sanctuary was concerned, so we're just stripping it out.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Okay. Do I have any other discussion? Ms. Pickard, do you have? Okay. All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Nine.
Ms. Raviyan is absent, I believe she's making her way back here. Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan, would you like to vote on this amendment? Thank you very much, seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Nine has been adopted.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank the administration for working really diligently with the senior dog sanctuary to make sure this bill doesn't undercut their, their operations. So thank you all very, very much.
All right, okay. Bill Number 6825 as amended will be heard on October 20th, 2025. And I believe that Animal Services is having a vaccination clinic Thursday, is that y'all? I'm, I'm putting her on the spot on there, is that?
I believe we have one next Thursday.
Next Thursday? The, it's, I know there's one coming up.
Yeah, but, but on the 25th, we're having our Halloween potty, Saturday the 25th.
And so animals.
It's a lot of fun.
Trunk or treat, and animals can come in costumes, so it really, so can grownups. And you could match your animal, you could have a, you know, themed costumes, so come on out. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7125 as amended.
Bill Number 7125, An Ordnance Concerning Public Campaign Financing, Disbursement of Public Contribution, Funding for Public Campaign Financing Fund.
All right, this is my bill, as we've discussed before, the primary purpose of this bill is to create a, a process by which we could add supplemental funds outside of the budget cycle to the public campaign financing, and to create an auditing, a plan for auditing the funds. Administration, do you have anything to?
Nope, we're happy to support, and there are a couple amendments to discuss at the appropriate time.
All right, is there any discussion? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7125 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 7125? Okay, please come forward, come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record, remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool, please.
Okay. My name's Rebecca Forte, I live in Severna Park, and I wanted to share that with amendments, Bill 7125 is better, but it is still unable to solve the core problem. It is too late. No bill introduced after June's 87% funding cut will ever be able to be apolitical, because the choice to ignore the apolitical math of the commission was in and of itself already a political act. Any attempt to try and determine funding amounts for the public financing system that occurs based on the number of candidates is inherently subject to the bias of the fiscal authority. The fiscal authority is the county council. This means that the intended recipients of this fund are inherently the opponents of the fiscal authority. The county council could combat this bias by viewing the math problems in the commission's videos. The commission used publicly available data from all the other counties that had already used public financing before us in order to determine the most reasonable levels of funding. Council members would have heard the commission grapple with the concern of a hypothesis potentially being wrong, and would it have been worse to slightly overfund or to underfund? Learning that the funds from one election cycle would roll over to the next cycle, the commission determined that it would have been slightly better to accidentally overshoot rather than underfund. The consequences of underfunding would mean that candidates do not get the promised matching amounts, as the comptroller has to make hard decisions. According to the USGEO report from December of 2024, underfunding has a chilling effect on many candidates, candidates who would otherwise be open to using a program. They cannot risk something going wrong and not getting the fully promised matching amount, so some won't try. I would worry that this poison has potentially already been set in Anarundale County, which according to the Board of Elections has funded the second lowest amount of any county. Our 1.25 million is less than half the amount in Baltimore County, Montgomery County, and even tiny Howard County. Thus far, there are 37 public finance candidates in Maryland, and only one is in Anarundale County. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Teto, Papa Avenue, Annapolis. I've been using the phrase disappointed but not surprised a lot the last several years, but it aptly describes how I feel about what y'all did to undermine the public financing bill. Republicans, I already know y'all don't care about elections and about democracy, so I'm not even surprised. And Democrats, our party doesn't want democracy either, evidence, by the way, the party fights hard to keep third parties off the ballots, so you're not absolved either. Councilwoman Hummer, you're quoted in the Baltimore Banner as saying that you're not comfortable having that money sitting in an account and not being able to touch it, but that's exactly the point of why the money is kept inaccessible. Elected officials have repeatedly shown that y'all can't be trusted not to dip into earmarked dedicated funds and reallocate them for your pet projects. On the federal level, it's Social Security, state level, it's the transportation fund, and now here locally, you want to ensure access to these funds that should be set aside for public campaigns. I'm sure you know the saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. You didn't even wait to see if the system is broke after a few election cycles like you usually do after passing legislation. What's really sad is that you're undermining making our election process more fair at a time when faith in our elections and democracy is at a low point over an amount of money that equates to less than 0.1% of the $2.4 billion budget, which equates to 0.1%, less than that of the, and is effectively couch cushion money when you look at it at the household level. Despite all the lip service to financing, you'd rather have access to couch cushion money for your pet project than restore faiths in our election and make them more fair? Well, you broke it, you fixed it. And as we've said, certainly, it's uncertain, discourages candidates. So if you really care about better elections, I think you already poisoned the bill, but the best thing to do now is restore its integrity and amend it to further add a clear, immediate way to restore the funding to the commission's recommended level without the fund having first to be deemed insufficient and make those funds inaccessible. Otherwise, history will not judge you kindly, and this will be part of your legacy.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Rick Rizold, 823 Holly Drive East, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here tonight speaking for the Broad Net Council of Communities. Frankly, they've said it. My main takeaway, our main takeaway from this bill is that it lacks clear, reliable way to encourage candidates to use public financing. Instead, it maintains the obstacles that discourage participation. These amendments make it better, but it isn't what needs to be done ultimately. For perspective, the fiscal note for this bill states that about $8.4 million could fully fund all the candidates over a four-year cycle. This equates to three and a half, one thousandths of a percent of Anarundale County's fiscal budget. In comparison, this is less than the amount approved for just the initial deposit on a new electric ferry. Cost estimate's $8.9 million, running between Baltimore and Annapolis annually. For that investment, the county could ensure fairer elections. For that investment, the county could ensure fairer elections where diverse voices compete for votes and special interest money doesn't drown out good ideas. The county already maintains a rainy day fund that in- earns interest. If a public financing fund were managed similarly, unused money from a fully reserved funded could roll over, remain protected, and continue to grow interest. This should be treated as a permanent investment in good government, kept safe from yearly council whims. That stability would give candidates the confidence to use the system. Funding elections is essential, as essential is funding schools, roads, and fire protection. For many years, much of the money wouldn't even be needed. When it is used, the refill amount would be predictable over a year ahead of time, free from the council's need to intervene. So, let's give this law its missing piece, a dependable, automatic funding stream that is with a practical ceiling. With the right structure, it could operate without constant council budget debates and finally offer candidates a reliable, secure, functional path to public funding. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 7125 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7125, as amended.
Bill Number 7125. An ordinance concerning public campaign financing, dispersment of public contribution, funding for public campaign financing fund.
Okay. There are four amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Seven.
Amendment Number Seven. This amendment changes the requirement of the controller to disperse the appropriate public contributions to a participating candidate's publicly funded campaign account from within three days to promptly but no later than 10 business days after receiving the participating candidate's submission.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a spirited conversation at the last council meeting about what promptly means. So, we went back and revised the amendment. The current language in the bill says three business days. As Mr. Schenk explained, that's kind of unworkable for finance, depending on when they receive information from campaigns. So, this says promptly but has a maximum of 10 business days. So, that gives finance every, enough time to sufficiently evaluate the matching contributions that are coming from individuals and cut a check to the campaign.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Raviyan, second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I think we all appreciate the further explanation of promptly to have in there. So, Madam Secretary, please call the... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Raviyan, I didn't see.
I just wanted to thank the administration as we found out I had drafted, or I had requested drafted a more or less identical amendment, so you got to it first.
Mr. Smith?
Oh, no. No, thank you for the amendment. And I'll probably, if you could just reiterate this, even with the other amendments, that the administration is completely solidly behind these amendments. I am not necessarily a fan of voting, and I've said this to some groups who have reached out to me previously on this particular subject, but if it is to improve the process, the county executive, and obviously, Councilwoman Raviyan's amendments as well, that will definitely, I would appreciate that.
Certainly. Yes, this amendment is to add some clarity and certainty to the process, to make sure that the program functions well.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Seven.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye, and thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Seven has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eight.
Amendment Number Eight. This amendment allows the council to consider supplement funding for public campaign financing as an emergency ordinance.
Okay. Ms. Raviyan, this is your amendment.
Thank you. This is basically, you know, obviously, timing is everything in an election, and this would allow, you know, if the, if the council could sort of determine that the votes were there, it would allow the funding to happen immediately instead of having to wait the ordinary 45-day period.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
We're comfortable with this amendment. We support it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Raviyan, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Why do we need this? Because isn't anything that the council deems to be an emergency ordinance with five votes going to be an emergency? What's the, what's the need for this? This is already the law.
It's clarifying for the specific purpose. If, I mean...
I mean, it's already, anything that five council members say is an emergency is an emergency. That's just, so I'm assuming nothing about this changes the five-vote threshold, right?
No.
Okay.
It's really just, maybe as a reminder to say, hey, it might be a wise choice, you know, to, if, you know, if you believe in funding this, you know, if you believe in getting the funding moving, make it an emergency ordinance so it can happen immediately.
Ms. Pickard?
Well, a supplemental appropriation would come down from the county executive, so it wouldn't generate from us. So, we couldn't deem it an emergency until it was in front of us, correct?
It could be brought down by the administration as an emergency, just as they do on every of their quarterly transfer bills, so they could bring it down and say, this is an emergency. Before they bring it down, they're going to do what they normally do for the benefit of the public. They call all of us, and they say, do you think it's an emergency? If they get five people who say, yes, it is, then they say, hey, we might pass this. So, they bring it down.
I got you.
So, I mean, this is the same thing. We're just sort of stating the obvious. I'm not, I'm not bashing you. I just think it's unnecessary.
Sometimes it's good to state the obvious.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, Chris Trembauer, Budget Officer. So, Mr. Volkey, when I was on the council, it only took four votes to make an amendment to change it to emergency, but then you'd need five votes to pass it as emergency. Is that, I just wanted to make sure that...
Okay. Point being, you still can't pass an ordinance that is deemed an emergency ordinance unless you have five votes of the council.
But you can amend it with four.
Right. And any supplementary budgetary or ordinance, my goodness, I'm losing the word, is already going to take immediate effect. That's in, that's already in the code and in the charter, so I'm not sure what the need for this is, because it already exists.
Again, when I was on the council, we had a term of art for this. It was called belt and suspenders. So, some people like to wear the belt. That keeps your pants up. Some people like to wear suspenders. That keeps your pants up. You can wear both, and your pants still are kept up.
I saw the guy who used to have your job who likes belt and suspenders the other night.
All right. Any other comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Feedler?
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Eight has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Nine.
Amendment Number Nine. This amendment permits certified candidates in uncontested elections to receive 1/3 of the public contributions the candidate would otherwise receive.
Okay. Ms. Raviyan, this is your amendment.
Thank you. So, this is a provision in the state law with respect to public financing for governor's races, and so this is just a parallel amendment that would apply to our, our law. I move the amendment.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second, second amendment.
Okay. Administration?
We believe this is a policy decision for the council.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? Ms. Pickard?
I don't... So, this changes just the public contribution? It doesn't change the... Okay.
So...
Uncontested. I just wanted to talk it through for a minute.
Right. I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I just clarified, so they would be eligible for 1/3 of the public contribution. Would they still have to meet the same threshold to qualify to receive the thing? So, they'd still have to reach the higher threshold, but instead of, say, you know, $75,000, they would only be able to receive $25,000 from public, from public...
Correct. And without this amendment, if their election were uncontested, they would receive zero. So, this is to make sure that they receive at least 1/3 instead of zero in an uncontested, if it were an uncontested race.
It says that in the bill, that they would receive nothing in an uncontested race?
There's no provision for it in the current code, so this adds a provision.
This, this clarifies that you, even in an uncontested race, you would have to distribute at least 1/3.
Is there any provision in current code that talks about an uncontested race? I don't think there is. That's, I think this is new. If I'm reading the code correctly, what I'm looking at online, in 1-12, and all the subsections 101 to 112, I don't see anything about uncontested. Am I missing that?
And, and, and Madam Chair?
Yeah. Mr. Smith?
If it's sponsored, I can say, when, can you define when a race is considered uncontested? Because that, that timing, you know, central committees could appoint someone to fill the vacancies for a vacant seat, depending on when the time is. So, when the ballot or the filing deadline says it's uncontested, and then they assume that they don't have a contest, and they only receive 1/3 of the money, a central committee could then put someone in that race, and then it's now, now it's contested, and so...
Right. And then they would be eligible for the full amount, because it would no longer be an uncontested race.
Right. I just don't remember in the bill where it said that if you were a candidate, you're not going to receive the money regardless. That's what I'm confused on.
There's nothing in the current law, just so everybody knows, that says if you're in an uncontested race, you get anything. Hence, the reason Ms. Raviyan is saying you get zero, because there is no funding mechanism that exists.
Right.
This is creating a funding mechanism that says, in the event you are uncontested, here is what you get, because currently it is a big zero. So...
So, this basically ensures that someone in an uncontested race gets at least part of their matching funds as opposed to zero.
Subject to the Office of Law confirming that.
Exactly.
So, you wouldn't be able, you wouldn't, you're not, a candidate is not eligible for public matching funds unless they have an opponent, correct?
Okay.
That's how it's currently written? So, but do we need, again, going back to, at what point is it considered uncontested?
State Board of Elections has said that with respect to that definition, it's when a candidate has filed. So, if no candidate has filed, there's no, it's uncontested.
But to Mr. Smith's point about a central committee, there's a period of time in which the central committee is allowed to put somebody on the ballot if no one has filed from their party.
Correct.
That's on both, both sides. So, it would seem to need to be after that point. Right? It would need to be not only the filing deadline, no one has filed, but then coupled with now the period for the central committee to designate someone has expired, and now you've gotten to a point where it very clearly is simply one person in the race. And then you get in a situation that I'll just tell you I had, where a write-in candidate filed in like August in my race, even though I was uncontested in, after the initial filing deadline, and the central committee did not elect to put somebody in. So, then how does that interplay with this, too?
So, if, if this had, if you had been using public campaign finance, you would have been eligible to at least read, receive 1/3 of your matching funds.
What happens when the write-in comes in?
If the, when the write-in is filed, then it's no, then it's no longer uncontested, and you would get the rest of your, is that a fair interpretation? You would get the rest of your matching funds.
But then, I think, may I? So, then I think the policy question that we as a body have to grapple with is, why are we funding people in an uncontested race? Like, that's the threshold question is, why give any money to a candidate that is clearly not in a contested race and therefore is not even having to campaign, because no one's run, I think this is highly unlikely this is going to happen, by the way, but to the extent that it does, why is that even a thing?
Because exactly what you said, it's highly unlikely that they would stay uncontested. So, they might be uncontested for a period of time, but they're likely to eventually be uncontested, and this would allow them to move forward with their campaign. I mean, I think that's exactly the reason that the state has this provision in their law, is so someone could continue to move forward with their campaign, even if it weren't with the full matching funds, if they were using public campaign finance. Because it's very likely that they would be contested. And if they weren't, you know, if they weren't ultimately contested, then, then the county or, the county has saved 2/3 of their matching funds.
I guess where I was coming at it, and you and I took different tactics on the unlikeliness, I was suggesting it's unlikely there will be uncontested races. I'm suggesting most races in the county, whether they're county executive or council seats, are going to be contested.
Right. It's also a matter of timing, too.
Ms. Feedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just making a comment before we vote this evening. Back during budget, when we were discussing this whole topic, you know, I felt like we needed to come back to the table and fix what happened in that process. That's why we're seeing the bill now. I get very hesitant when I look at amendments that expand upon what the initial bill did, because really, my intent is to come back to the table and work on fixing what happened during budget. So, that will be the reason for my vote this evening.
Okay. And then I will throw out there, I agree that it's highly unlikely that any race is going to be uncontested the whole time, but even if you are uncontested, I think candidates still want to be introducing themselves to the voters and letting, get to know that. So, even being able to get 1/3 of that money helps them to inform the, the people in their district or in their area that they're running. So, there's value to campaigning even when you don't have a, have an opponent to have there.
And for a long period of time, they could be uncontested and then become contested.
Right.
So, at least being able to use some of their matching funds before that point when the race is at last contested.
I got it. I got it. So, any other discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Nine.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Can I ask a question? No.
It's your turn to vote.
Just for clarification, they currently get no money right now. This is giving uncontested candidates at least a bite at the apple, according to Office of Law.
That's correct.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Feedler?
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Nine has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Ten.
Amendment Number Ten. This amendment allows the county executive to propose a supplement to the public campaign
Amendment number 10. This amendment allows the county executive to propose a supplement to the public campaign finance fund via ordinance at any time.
Okay. Um, Ms. Rodvian, this is your amendment.
Thank you. So, uh, this might be another Belt and Suspender's Amendment. But just to clarify, because in other parts of the bill, we talk about, um, the controller notifying a, a potential deficiency. This is to clarify that the county executive doesn't necessarily have to wait for the controller to note a potential deficiency, that they could go ahead and fund, um, you know, add funds as they see fit. And I move the amendment.
Do I have a second? Don't have a second.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're comfortable with this amendment.
Any discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Is this a Belt and Suspender's Amendment?
Chris Strombauer, Budget Officer, um, by my reading, it's more than that because unless Lori tells me differently, what this does do is it creates an upper limit. So this would mean that the county executive could only appropriate up to what the commission recommended. There is no such provision in the current bill, correct?
Correct. But I think it's limited, I think the only up to what the commission recommended is for the transfer at any time or supplement at any time.
But we can put in a transfer bill whenever we want.
Exactly. Exactly. So.
So what I'm saying then, the practical effect of this amendment is that it creates an upper limit to what the county executive could put in, in a mid-year appropriation bill. And that upper limit is what the, um, commission has, uh, recommended. That's my reading of this.
But in the case of a deficiency, they're not bound by this.
It doesn't remove the other language relating to a supplemental. This, yeah, that's the way I'm reading it. There's, both of them are still in there.
So yeah, thank you for that point. Mr. Strombauer.
So this is saying that the county executive could propose a transfer of the amount up to what was recommended by the commission at any time, but then can also do, um, a request for additional funds as well. That's in there? Is that's not taking that away? That there could be, they could request more above what the commission recommended?
Well, they could, they could do what still, D, D three is still in there for the kind of second bite at the apple of going back and looking at the funding by the controller. That's still going to be in the bill. And then what this does is it adds another provision concerning being able to do it at any time up to what the commission originally recommended. That's the way I'm reading it. So what the controller may do kind of mid-season is come up with a different number or a number that's greater than what the commission recommended. And so that is what comes under D three. That's the best I can do reading this.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I?
I'm not sure that's the intent.
No, yeah, that's actually exactly the intent. So this creates two paths. So one path would be the one that's already there. There's a deficiency, the controller notes the deficiency, and the county executive responds to the deficiency with, um, uh, legislation to appropriate additional funds. This creates a second path where the county executive could, without the controller, bring forth legislation to appropriate funds up to the amount of the commission's recommendation. So just creating two, two paths.
And then the county executive can exceed the commission's recommendation during budget? No, they're still limited to the commission's recommendation in budget.
From the original law?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Just waiting for the answer.
Well, he's required to put in what the commission recommends.
Got you. So up to that.
Exactly that though, right? Doesn't the county executive have to propose exactly what the commission recommends?
Yes.
In budget?
In the budget.
Okay.
I, I do, Chris Strombauer, Budget Officer, I do believe there's a provision for, you know, fiscal hardship.
Right.
So if we're in the middle of a recession, technically the county executive could say, we can't afford to do that, but.
But aside from the, those circumstances, the county executive must put in what is recommended by the commission. So what this, what this amendment would say is, so for instance, this year, when we did not fund the full amount recommended by the commission, this is saying that at any time this year, despite of what the controller may say, that the county executive could bring forth an amendment to us to add back in the funds that we didn't fund in the budget.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, all right. Is there any other discussion? All right. Um, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 10.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard. I have, I have a question. Hasn't he already done that though? When he funded it at budget?
This creates like an ongoing opportunity. So if, for example, I mean, the, for ex- imagine the council did not fund the full amount.
I got you, got you, got you.
They wanted to maybe find a middle ground.
Thank you. Aye. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, amendment number 10 has been adopted.
Okay. Bill number 7125 as amended will be heard on October 20th, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7425 as amended.
Bill number 7425, in ordinance concerning zoning BWI mixed-use overlay area car washes.
Okay. Mr. Smith, this is your bill.
Thank you. Just, uh, a text amendment to add car washes to the BWI overlay, uh, has, has been previously discussed. And I think we also sort of defined what car washes, uh, were with past amendments. Say most of them. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Kelly Kenny are, uh, sorry, lost my spot here. Supervising County Attorney. Sorry.
Who is she? Who is she?
Going down one too many lines. Uh, we support this bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We will now open, any discussion? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on bill number 7425 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on bill number 7425? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on bill number 7425 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7425 as amended.
Bill number 7425, in ordinance concerning zoning BWI mixed-use overlay area car washes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 7425 as amended.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill number 7425 as amended has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7625.
Bill number 7625, in ordinance concerning public safety sidewalks, removal of snow and ice.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me I have Karen Henry, our Director of the Department of Public Works, Alex Baki, our Deputy Director for the Bureau of Highways, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney, as well as Holly Velez, our Chief of Licensing in the Department of Inspections and Permits. Uh, this bill was discussed at the work session last month. Um, but this was, the administration is asking for this, um, basically to address the number of constituent complaints we received, especially last year with a large amount of winter weather, larger than normal. Currently, under county code, enforcement of snow removal on sidewalks is delegated to the police department and they can write a $10 ticket. We don't feel that is a good use of the police officer's time and we don't feel that $10 citation really incentivizes people to get their sidewalks cleared. So what this bill does is it, uh, extends the amount of time that people have to clear their sidewalks uh, in front of their property to 24 hours after that initial 24 hours has expired. If a complaint is made, inspections and permits will go out and inspect and see if the sidewalk has been cleared. If not, they will post a warning, uh, for the property owner or resident to give them an additional 24 hours to get their sidewalk cleared. If not, at that point, they can be cited. It's a class D misdemeanor. And if the county ends up removing the snow, um, those costs can be assessed to the property owner. Happy to answer any questions or if anyone else at the table wants to add anything.
Um, Mr. Smith?
Big real quick. So, uh, in the event that a senior or someone who has like either medical issues aren't able to remediate that sidewalk in an appropriate time, is, uh, does the provision allow some flexibility on what the, the county deems as, as citable? So maybe, I'm, I'm just, is there flexibility built in so it's conditioned, uh, they can, you know, if it was, somebody had a medical issue or something?
So currently there's a, a provision in the bill that says anyone, if everyone in the residence is 55 or over, they're exempt. We do have an amendment that we can discuss later to increase that to 70 after the discussions at the work session. But I, I believe that inspections and permits would probably exercise some discretion.
Yep. Thank you.
Because again, this is not a revenue generator. This is intended to get people to clear their sidewalks.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Um, how many citations in the last snowstorm? Let's just go with that. Did the police department issue?
I think it is probably zero.
Okay. Okay. You said there were a lot of complaints. How many complaints were received during the last snowstorm?
I don't have the exact number. I can check with the, but they come into the various departments and to the constituent services. I know I received some from elected officials as well.
Okay. And were they concentrated in any particular area in the county? Did you have them countywide? Were they everywhere?
Yes.
Okay. So like where? I've heard about Forest Drive. That's the one I keep hearing about the most, but.
We all hear about Forest.
Where else?
This is Karen Henry, Director of the Department of Public Works. That was one of the loudest and most repeated.
Okay.
But we had them in your district. We had them in Glen Burnie, Brooklyn Park. Trying to think. I don't remember any Severna Park in Arnold and District Five. Um, we had some.
Snow blowers.
Yeah. And we had some in the Odenton area. So I think pretty much most of the county, we've had some complaints, but I don't have an exact number.
Okay. Um, so I, I guess I'm just trying to understand the scope of the problem. And I'm trying to understand if this solution is the right solution to what we perceive as the problem. So I just saw what Annapolis City passed in terms of their ordinance. And the headline on the front page of the newspaper was something about they can cite you up to $2,000 for not clearing your sidewalk. I don't think we're quite that bad, uh, which is good. Right. Which is good. But, but I'm also looking at it going, isn't this a per day fine? So couldn't that add up? Isn't each new day a new occurrence?
That's correct.
Okay. So if somebody, if it's a pretty bad snowstorm and let's say it's a week, it's conceivable you could get a $350, $400 fine if you just don't clear your sidewalk the whole time. Huh? Well, I'm like seven or eight days. I'm doing seven or eight times five. Times 50, sorry.
The bill does say that the, if after a certain period of time, and I, that, that, um, the depart- after 48 hours, the Department of Public Works would have to remove the snow, which we would contract out. I don't, I mean, I guess if we can't get out there, which could be a possibility.
Sure. And then what's the cost for removal? Like what's that gonna, what are you charging?
We would, we have not, we, our plan is to get a contract in place. We've gone out to bid on that recently, haven't gotten that. Still out there for, um, taking in proposals. So it'll be depend on whatever we get in the contract. We do not intend to use county staff for that.
Okay. So how do you currently deal with this situation when you get a complaint from a constituent that a sidewalk is not cleared?
The, the police department, the way it's supposed to work is the police department would go out because they're the ones that, um.
Are charged with enforcement authority.
Yeah. They're the ones that enforce this.
And so I'm.
And typically they have other things going on other than snow removal on sidewalks.
Sure.
So, um, and we have not been removing the snow from the sidewalk. The DPW is not removing the snow from the sidewalks. We were unable to meet the, the, we like to try to meet constituent concerns, but we just did not have the staff, the tools or the resources in order to do that. And, and your concern about whether this happens a lot, I mean, generally the snow melts in our county. It does not last for two weeks. Unfortunately, we have the rare event of a snow event that la- that did not melt. It lasted for two weeks on the sidewalks. That affected people, disabled people being able to get to the grocery store or to their jobs that don't generally take sidewalks. And of course, the schools, the students getting to school.
Okay.
So even though it may be rare, my point being that even though it may be rare, and hopefully we do not have to do this very often, this at least gives us a tool that we did not have during last year's snow events.
Yeah, understood that. But you do have a tool right now, which is if people are having mobility access issues to be able to get to and from essential services, whether it's transportation, going to the grocery store, getting medication, whatever it may be, the police could go out there and the police could sort of give an educational talk. And if people still say, hey, forget you, I'm not going to do it, the police could cite them. We could look at increasing what the police are able to do. I, I know that the police don't want to be the sidewalks no police. I know that. I understand it. But I also look at it and I say, they're out on the road all the time. They are trained to deal with very difficult people in very difficult situations all the time. They seem to me like at least of the people we have in the county who are able to go into a situation and maybe de-escalate it, they're some of the best that we have. So like I look at it and I say, okay, we've got that versus we've got the folks from inspections and permits who, I, I assume that's who's going to go out and enforce this, or maybe DPW, who probably don't have quite the same training as what the police have. So I'm just like wondering, are we putting this in the right place? That's, that's the question I'm getting at.
I, I mean, I, I believe that's a question best answered by IMP, but my, they are trained. I mean, they do have, that's what they do. So, you know, the part of their job, inspections and permits, they are dealing with difficult people and de-escalating, um, situations where our residents are not the happiest. So they may not be police officers and wear a badge, but they do have, that's part of the responsibility. And I'm sorry if I'm answering for you, but.
She likes your answer.
But I do have confidence in inspections and permits to be able to handle that role.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I was just simply going to say, I am actually a fan of making it a civil versus criminal because, uh, police are already understaffed and, um, you know, having them go out there and what a ruler or whatever it is to, to make sure of the sidewalks is just, they're, they're more pressing issues. Not saying that they're not important, uh, but I think on the civil side of the house, it alleviates a lot of stress and puts it where I think it probably should have been in the beginning. Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you, I'm looking at the sanction or violation section where it talks about, um, with respect to sidewalks, abutting residential property is a class D civil offense. And then with respect to sidewalks, abutting any other property, it is a class D civil event, civil offense. Could someone please explain the difference between a class E and a class D? And then talk about what the consequences of that, of those two different categories is, so that we have a really clear understanding of that.
So while Ms. Blair Klosmeyer looks it up, looks up the, the exact code.
I understand you probably don't have that off the top of your head, nor do I, hence the question. So.
Yeah. What I would say generally is a, a class E civil violation is a much lower fine than a class D civil violation. So that a, if it's a residential property, so someone's home, it would be a much lower fine than if it were a commercial property owner.
Versus 250? I think it's 50 and then I think a D is, is 250. Holly, my head.
Hi, Holly Velez, Chief of Licensing. Uh, $50 is a class E, $100 is a class D.
For the first offense, right? And then it goes up, I think. And then, yeah, it says each violation exists is a separate offense. Is each day?
Yes.
A separate violation? Okay. That's what I thought.
I believe so. That's how it's stated in here. Each day is a separate offense?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to clarify, day one of a class E is $50. Day two is a new offense. That's 100. Day three is a new offense. That's 500. Day four is a new offense. That's 500. So if you get to day four, you're at $1,150. Is that right?
Mr. Volkey?
And if you're a business on class D, you're 125 the first day, 500 the second, a thousand for the third and the fourth and ongoing. Right? But this is not a revenue generator.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. The department would have some discretion in issuing those fines, correct? So, you know, if it turned out to be, um, my colleague doesn't like discretion. But you could exercise discretion and say, you know, we can see that $1,500 is a unreasonable fine for the offense here. But we would like to issue a define, a fine that would at least act as a deterrent so you don't, uh, leave your sidewalk unshuffled in the future.
We have that ability?
All right. Any other comments? All right.
My, my last comment, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Volkey.
So how are we different than, because I started off saying I thought we were different than Annapolis City, who the headline was $2,000 getting fined. But if you're a business who leaves snow on your sidewalk for three days, you're at 1625 and counting. You could be over, if four days with that, you could be over $2,600. I guess. I mean, is this what you want to vote for?
Well, I'll say how I envision it. I think most of this will be complaint driven. So it's not going to be inspections and permits driving around a neighborhood and saying, aha, I'm going to get you. This is going to be if somebody's calling and there, there may not be all, but I know I wouldn't call unless I felt it was unsafe and it was something that was going on and they had the chance. I imagine in a big snow inspection of permits, it's also not going to be revisiting every place that they've given a ticket to every day because that is just not going to be feasible. That they have to go every day and check it. 24 hours.
24 hour, it's the first complaints, it'd be, have to be 24 hours after the first snow.
Okay.
Okay. So you, there's one day already that you have to clear. Somebody files a complaint, we have to go out, visit the resident, you know, business, explain, you know, the law and, you know, advise them that they have 24 hours to have this cleared. That we would be back to, you know, check to see that it is clear. There's two days there that they have the option. You know, if we go back that day and they've got half of it done or something, you know, okay, we're going to give you another day just to, you know.
Right.
You need to get this clear though. You have, you know, your neighbor's in a wheelchair, you got kids going to school. We, we don't want to be the hardline police.
Right.
Not our intent to, you know, punish the residents for a snowfall.
Right. I mean, my. I mean, my, my support for this is because I hope it incentivizes people to clear their sidewalks for public safety reasons, so that we can all get around. And I do like that, you know, I appreciate that you clarified that you're just not going and tacking a ticket on the front door. You're going to speak to the homeowner and/or the business and say, it is, you need to clean your sidewalk to have this. So it's not that they don't know what is, the expectation is and what's coming.
Right, there would be, you know, a door hanger or some type of notice that, you know, this was, you know, that you have 24 hours additional to get this cleared off, so...
So, okay. Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, I know we talked about this some at the work session, but I know not all of our citizens always tune into our work sessions, but just for the, make sure we're clear, that this bill doesn't do anything to hold government accountable for cleaning their own sidewalks. And I, I don't, I'm not just throwing stones at county. A, a major complaint that happens in my district on a regular basis is sidewalks that are on state roads that are used for public transportation to schools and to employment and that thing. And I just want to make sure that as we're debating this, the public is aware that this is limited to private sector, not to government, unless I am wrong. Correct me if I am.
Laurie Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. That's correct, basically because of the county's inability to really do that to the state.
Understand, I just want to make sure we're clear about its, what it can and can't do. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad you brought that point up, that, I thought that very same thought when looking at the bill. Now that the school system has really honed in on communities that are in walking distance from schools, um, I have communities right outside of Broadneck High School that have to use the Broadneck Trail to get to school. Um, that is their walking path. But Wreckin' Parks has seven days to clear snow and ice, because that's not a primary transportation hub. So last year, I saw kids like walking through sludge and ice and snow. Um, it was not necessarily ice when the sun was shining, but to your point, we aren't responding to the degree that is proposed in the bill, so I'm a little, little hesitant with that.
Mr. Volkey.
Just making sure that all my colleagues have read C1, which is the enforcement provision. Nothing in there requires inspections and permits to speak to anyone. It literally says, "Inspections and permits will promptly inspect the site during normal business hours, and if violation is found, post a reminder notice in a conspicuous location on the property abutting the sidewalk, allowing an additional 24 hours to remove the snow or ice." Then subsection two, "The Department of Inspections and Permits shall re-inspect the site after the additional 24 hours, so that they must go back out, and if the snow and ice has not been removed, shall deem the owners, users, lessees, or occupants of the property, or any of them, to be in violation of this section and post a violation notice." So you don't get 48 hours, you get 24 hours, from the time that inspections and permits gets there to the time that they come back the next day and say, you're deemed to have violated this, and now we are going to start fining you. And then, subsection three, "If after the additional time provided for in C1, which is 24 hours, snow or ice hasn't been removed, the Department of Public Works can arrange for the removal at the expense of the owner, which shall include all costs of the expenses associated with the removal. The costs and expenses of the removal from the sidewalk shall constitute a lien on the abutting property and shall be collected in the same manner as provided for in the collection of taxes." So we're going to lien people's property for clearing snow. This is like next-level government overreach. Like, I mean, this is not Anarondo County.
Mr. Smith?
Will the administration be open? There are some provisions of this I'm certainly a fan of, uh, just like I said, from the criminal to the civil, I think that's 100% the right, right decision. Um, it is, it is, you know, to go from that max $10 penalty to potentially over $1,000, uh, you know, that's, that's significant, is, would the administration be willing to hold this, to have a conversation on what potentially that should look like?
Yeah, I think I absolutely would be open to the conversation. I will just point out that liens, liens on properties are issued for all sorts of code citations, like vacant homes that are open to casual entry. If we have to go in and clear that property up, that is placed as a lien on the property on the tax bill.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, okay with that.
Yeah.
I mean, we can get fined, somebody can get fined for Jimson weed. I didn't even know what that was until I read the code here recently. I don't even know, I mean, I technically still don't even know what it is, but, uh, somebody can get fined for Jimson weed. Um, so I just want to make sure, at least for me, I'm not speaking about the other council members, if, if you're asking for my vote tonight, um, uh, it, it may not be there, so if, if I can sort of feel comfortable with that penalty structure, it will certainly help me out, because I, I do think that's, to go from $10 to potentially $1,000 is, is significant.
Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
We do have amendments that we'll touch on those.
Right, which would give us more options to further amend this bill moving forward.
Correct.
So I, there, there will be some votes on amendments tonight, so there won't be a final vote on this bill, if any of those pass, so...
It's the same level as the Jimson weed, 250, just joking.
Ms., Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out that these fines are still tiny compared to what you might end up paying if you were sued for a trip and fall. Someone slid on the sidewalk in front of your house and, you know, broke their hip or hit their head and had a concussion, and, you know, all of the things that can happen. So, just throwing that perspective out there.
Ms. Pickard.
I was, I was actually wondering that. So we have to work, be very diligent on our sidewalk, because it, our, we have bad drainage from a house built in the 2000s with not proper stormwater management. So we're constantly having ice in cold weather. So we're constantly having to do this with, you know, pet-friendly salt products and all those kinds of things. But with that, if someone, if one of my neighbors were to fall and hit their head, or am I, am I as a homeowner liable for that? Or is my homeowners association? Is the sidewalk mine?
Sidewalk's yours.
So I don't know, guys, this is tricky.
It's kind of, it's, no, I mean, the code currently states that you are responsible for clearing the snow and ice on the sidewalk in front of your property. So, right, so that would be if, if someone did slip and fall and you hadn't cleared it, they could have a case. Right, Mr. Volkey?
So we should call this the Protect Homeowners From Themselves Bill.
Yeah.
We are going out proactively to protect you from what you didn't even know you were going to get sued for. Great.
It's awesome for the...
Yeah.
You'll get sued too, so we're protecting everyone. Protecting business owners, this is a protective bill.
Well, I, I do consider it, I do consider it a safety bill, because quite honestly, I mean, I, I know when my kids have tried to walk to school to the bus stop, and they've had to walk in the street or something because people haven't cleared their walks, and it is unsafe to have that, so it's an incentive. But I will agree with you, Mr. Volkey, that we need to look, because I'm with you, I don't necessarily want to put a massive lien on some, somebody's house because they didn't get their snow cleared in a couple of days. So I think we can have some further discussions on that.
Ms. Pickard.
Is this, this process, or this, is this outs, is this, would this make Anarondo County an outlier in states that deal with snowfall? I mean, do other, Montgomery County, Howard County, Prince George's County?
When we drafted the legislation, we looked at Prince George's, Montgomery, DC. Annapolis had a different rule than they have now, just that they just passed, but we did look at the city of Annapolis's, um...
What else?
Baltimore County. So we did look at surrounding jurisdictions that all have some sort of sidewalk, snow removal on sidewalks legislation, which have fines that are way more than $10. I mean, you know, that are in line with what we are recommending on this bill.
Thank you.
And that establishes a lien.
Well, the establish, are you asking a question about the lien?
Mm-hmm.
Because that is just pretty, we do that, because if we're going to put county resources into it, the only way we would get paid back if there's some more teeth behind it. Otherwise, we would not get reimbursed for that, whatever we provided. In this case, it would be the snow removal.
Correct, right, no. Ms. Rodvian.
I just thought I would throw out the idea, we could cap the amount of allowable fine, like per snow event, and that might...
That might...
That might resolve some concerns for Councilmember Smith, thank you.
It was going to be for Councilmember Smith. I don't think anything you're going to do is going to appease Councilmember Volkey.
Take it to a $10 fine, and I'm up there.
There you go. It's kind of, inspections and permits, please keep an eye on Mr. Volkey's property at the next snowstorm.
I have no sidewalks.
So...
My community has no sidewalks.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on bill number 7625.
Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one piece, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on bill number 7625? And we do have someone coming up. So please come at the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Yes, sir?
Yes, good evening again. Steve Miller, 613 Samantha Court, Annapolis, Maryland. Let me just say upfront that I think that the DRP and the DPW, shared path, bike and pedestrian pathways should be maintained to the same requirements that the public needs to maintain their sidewalk, uh, snow removal to. This has a direct impact on our HOA, and I'm sure many others financially. We already have a comprehensive snow removal plan that includes both public and private HOA-owned sidewalks within our community. But to fully comply with this and not risk possible enforcement actions by even one member of our community, we will have to add 500 additional sections of sidewalk, or 8,000 square feet of sidewalk, to our snow removal plan. It's not inexpensive to plan for snow removal, it's an art, and we're very conscientious. And fortunately, in our particular case, our fiscal year is from January to December, so we have an opportunity right now in our budget cycle to plan for this, but there are probably other communities that don't have that same opportunity with this bill. The other thing is, what will we do about the 55-plus that may request an exemption? We have at least six members on my street, I think, that would qualify. I won't put in for an exemption, but, you know, just again, for safety purposes and liability, it's already been talked about, we may have to consider that. Finally, we have a snow warden, and a snow warden is a volunteer that works with the contractors and also, you know, before and after the storm, and with the board, to ensure we can get our snow removed within 24 hours easily. You know, when I take a look outside my community and I see Baydale, where there is a shared-use pathway or Broadneck Trail, which takes walking students to Broadneck High School, again, it irks me that volunteers will be that responsible and we can't see the same thing on the county side.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. The public hearing on bill number 7625 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7625.
Bill number 7625, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Sidewalks Removal of Snow and Ice.
Okay, there are two amendments. Mr. Hunt, amendment, I believe you have something on amendment number one.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So amendment number one increases the age limit for the exemption from 55 to 70, but it's missing a second reference, so I'm going to ask to withdraw amendment number one.
Okay. Amendment number one is withdrawn. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two, this amendment increases the age of exemption from 55 to 70 or older, removes the lien and tax collection provision for fines, removes the violation for sidewalks abutting any other property, and removes the provision that each day is a separate offense.
Okay, Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The summary does, is a good summary, does just that. It takes, uh, it actually increases the age in both spots, which I believe was the administration's intent, added that to my amendment in order not to conflict with their amendment, but the last two paragraphs in the bill, it removes the portion that we've discussed here, and I move the amendment forward.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask the council not to adopt this amendment. Well, I do appreciate the, increasing the age exemption from 55 to 70. As Ms. Henry said, the, the lien provision is a way for the county to recoup costs in the event that we have to expend county resources on clearing something, clearing sidewalks that are the property owner's responsibility. Additionally, the violations for sidewalks abutting any other property, so that is kind of geared towards commercial properties, because that was one of the issues we had in the last several snowstorms, was commercial property owners who have extensive lengths of sidewalk that were, was not being cleared, and that was forcing students to walk out in the street to get to school.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt? Did we already do that? We already did that, sorry. Discussion? Mr. Smith?
Oh, um, I, I, I already just cleared there for a second, I put in the three provisions I had, I have to come back.
Ms. Pickard.
Uh, just, I guess this is for the sponsor. Ms. Fiedler, is the, is that the intent of the abutting sidewalk property? Is it for, is it to exempt commercial properties?
I'm willing to have another discussion on commercial. When I was drafting this amendment, my focus was on residential, because I can think of a variety of reasons why someone might not be able to get to their snow on their sidewalk within the parameters of the bill. Um, and I think that reaching $1,150 in four days is just entirely unreasonable. So it, the $50, which is a $40 increase from where it is right now.
That's one of the three things. Never mind, let me look.
Yeah, so the amendment changes the age, it increases the age to 70 for the exemption. It says, uh, it's a Class E violation, which is $50, but that's not $50 every day, that's $50 one time. And then it removes the language about, um, the lien on property. Because again, we're, we have exempted 70-plus, but I can think of a variety of reasons why someone would not be able to get to clearing their sidewalk in four or five days. Death in the family, illness in the family, physical disability. I mean, you name it, we're, we're counting on people reaching out to their neighbors and saying, hey, listen, I don't want to get fined because I've got a neighbor on next door who hates me, and they really want to stick me with a $1,150 fine, so can you help me? We're, we're assuming a lot about residents in Anarondo County and their reliance on their neighbors to shovel their sidewalk for snow, of snow, when they can't. I mean, it's just, this is a little wild to me, and that's the reason for the amendment.
Mr. Smith?
It came back. So the reason I actually am in, in favor of the, the enforcement mechanism as far as the lien provision, I don't want to, you know, evict someone because of a lien or take the house, but having that as a, I've had instances where we've had lawns, for example, that have grown up in Brooklyn Park for months, and, and I get so many complaints, and I can't do anything about it. And one of the things that I've always said to the citizens or the residents who complain about it, well, once the county is able to do it, they may hire someone to remove the lawn or cut it, and they'll just place a lien on it, right? So that they can recoup that cost at some point in the future. So I don't, I don't necessarily want to remove the ability for the county, if they, if they have to hire someone to do something significant, to remove that mechanism, to recoup that cost from the hiring. I mean, I think there should be protection, so we're not, if it's a, you know, $80 lien, we're not trying to put somebody at their house, but, but I, I do want the, the cost to be recouped at some point, and having that mechanism, I think, does provide a hole to the county if they are to remediate whatever the infraction is. So that's also the reason I'm in favor of that provision, and not necessarily wanting to remove it in totality. So, thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Oh.
Mr. Volkey.
What if you're out of town? Like, what if you happen to go on a cruise? Because you thought January is a great time, we get a lot of snow in Maryland. I don't really want to be in Maryland when it snows, because I'm older, or I'm infirm, or whatever, I've got a mobility issue, maybe there's a disability, but the point is, you're out of town, or you're completely able-bodied, but you're out of town, and you don't clear your sidewalk, and IMP comes out, and IMP posts your property, but you're not there. So you can't clear your sidewalk. So what are you to do? Am I, when I go out of town now, supposed to hire a sidewalk person to be on standby in case... hire a sidewalk person to be on standby in case heaven forbid it snows? Oh, wow, okay. All right. So I just want to make sure I'm clear that everybody who's running for office again is good with making sure they tell their constituents, I voted to put a lien on your property because you might have been out of town and there was snow removal. So whatever the fines are and the cost of removal, eh, good, we're going to, we're going to lien you.
Is there an appeal process for any of these? For when we have, get notices and things? It's not in the bill. I mean, it's generally for inspections permit. So for instance, like Mr. Smith mentioned, the overgrown houses, can, is there an appeal process if you receive, you know, notices or something?
Lori Blair Klassmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, everybody's looking down here. So there is a process to go to district court. Many citations are filed in district court. You can pay the citation or you can go to court. You can, so yes, there is a process, there is a due process involved when you get a civil citation.
Okay. Ms. Pickard?
So I just want to be clear with your rhetoric here. There are lots of violations, civil violations in our code currently that would put you, have a lien on your property. We deal with them all the time. And abatement issues, that's not something new. I'm not saying that I support 100% of this bill. I'm just saying it's not a new thing. And snow removal is, you know, it is dangerous. We're keeping icy sidewalks, but, you know, it's probably more dangerous than tall weeds that people get liens on their house, right? So we, it's not, this isn't a new concept in the code.
Ms. Rodbien?
Thank you. So the scenario that we keep coming to of these high, extra high fines, or these, you know, kind of oddly high fines, only would happen if DPW wasn't, didn't go back and actually clear the snow themselves, right? I mean, we wouldn't, I mean, once the snow is cleared, they're not going to, the property owner's not going to have additional fines. And I have another thought, too. But is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's correct unless it snows again.
Right, but that's separate, I mean-
Then it's a whole nother event.
Right, then it's a whole nother thing. But I guess I just want to bring the conversation back. The whole reason that we got so many complaints, at least in Annapolis, was because we had, and I know, Forest Drive, yes, we had, we, one of my counterparts in the city council saw a person in a wheelchair going down a lane in, on Forest Drive, in a wheelchair. And so, I mean, we can say that, yeah, it's, you know, kind of rough that you had to pay this fine, but how rough is it for that person in a wheelchair who's going and, and the, you know, lots of kids climbing over really, really icy snow? And we're talking about kids who don't have the greatest judgment to begin with. Do we want to risk them, you know, falling into the street and, you know, getting hit by a car? Or can we, you know, accept that we have to actually take some action and put some real deterrent to take care of the most vulnerable people in our communities?
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, it's not my district, so I would assume Forest is commercial. Was there commercial involvement?
I don't know, I don't know where it- But there's both residential and commercial.
It was a combination of residential and commercial-
Yeah.
-that we got the complaints about. And part of it was City of Annapolis sidewalks and part of it was Anarongo County sidewalks.
Forest Drive is complicated.
Thank you for that information. I just, I wanted to clarify the statement of my colleague with regard to what she experienced in her district. I think, for me, I hear what we're, I hear what you're saying. And that's why I put an amendment forward to try to find a compromise. For me, thinking back on last winter, it was really bad with snow removal. We addressed it in budget, but I have a really, I'm having a hard time with what we're saying in this bill coming off of that winter when people in my district couldn't even get to their homes with their cars for days.
So I am just, I'm going to say upfront that I'm going to vote for this amendment so that this carries over till the next meeting, so that I can, we could, well, we could do that, too. Oh, we have another, oh, we have another amendment, too. Okay. All right, I didn't realize that. Okay. So, yes, we haven't received it yet. It's the fix for the first amendment that came through. Just the age piece, okay. So, all right. Then let us go ahead. And Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Ms. Rodbien?
I'm going to vote nay because I would vote for half of this amendment if I could, but I can't, so nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number two has been defeated.
Okay, and I understand we have an amendment number three.
Yes. Amendment number three increases the age from 55 to 70 for the exemption. For the, to, for the requirement to remove the snow and ice from sidewalks. Needs to be changed in two locations in the bill, not just one.
Okay.
Which was what our first amendment had.
And, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number three.
Amendment number three, this amendment changes the age limit for the exemption to the requirement for ice and snow removal from sidewalks.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay. Now, any discussion on this one? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we're talking about exemptions, I understand the age here. Was there any discussion on exempting those with disabilities, those with medical conditions?
Once again, Karen Henry, Director of the Department of Public Works, yes. The concern with that is that the level of management of the program now, or being able to manage this and be able to get out there before the snow melts and really address this, that just adds more complexity and workloads and not, for not much gain. So I think what I believe IMP was planning and maybe you want to say was that, you know, having some flexibility within their, when they, if they, the appeal process to, they come forward with some other reason for why they couldn't remove the snow.
Madam Chair, Paul?
Yes.
The appeal process, though, Ms. Klassmeyer, would be through the courts.
For the citation?
Correct.
So they would have to go to court for that, so. Mr. Volkey?
That was going to your point.
I will add that we do null pross, we will, you know, certain, if we work with a property owner, the citation could be null pross before it went to court. So there is a possibility of working it out ahead of time.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is that language anywhere in the code or is that an internal policy?
That's just the way civil citations work in the district court. But it's not in the code. I mean, it is, right.
Okay. Mr. Volkey?
Is there an exemption if you have a disability?
Not, not a serendipity.
Okay. Do we think that's important?
I would say, I think it's important. I mean, I agree. If we have a 40-year-old in a wheelchair-
Yeah.
-there's not going to be the expectation-
Versus a 60-year-old who goes to the gym every day.
Right, well, well, if we pass this, they're going to, it's 70. So that 60-year-old is still going to have to shovel his walk.
I know some 75-year-olds that go to the gym every day.
Well, I do, too. So, but, but I understand what Ms. Henry says of how do we, we monitor that. I think that when I, I am interested in exploring that further, but for the next time to see if there's a way that we can address that.
Absolutely open to the conversation. I think it gets very hazy when you start looking at disabilities.
Well, and I'll say, and the easy way is, they got a handicap sticker on their car, then, you know, if they've qualified for a handicap spot, that could be, you know, a genuine one right there. Just looking at how are ways that we could distinguish that. Because I don't think, I think IMP's heads might explode if we say, oh, we're going to create a roster of everyone that has, says they have a disability that doesn't, hasn't shoveled their walk, so.
I'm not voting for any rosters of anyone.
No, I'm not either. I'm not either. I'm saying that is not something that any of us want. But how could we do this in a legitimate way? I think that's, let's talk with the administration more on that one. Ms. Fiedler, not Ms. Fiedler, Ms. Pickard? It's in my head, yep.
So in other, when we talk about homeownership and maintaining your property, are other, are other programs where we have frequent violations that really, are really about maintaining your property to a certain level, do we have exemptions for age and disability in the code?
Yeah, Lori Blair Klassmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, not that I'm aware of. For example, we see a lot of junk and debris, and I'm not aware of a age or disability exemption for that.
Because I'm, this is a slippery slope. Is there something particular in y'all's mind about snow removal that, because it's not regular, or it's, is there some reason why we think snow removal should have exemptions? I'm just trying to understand how we got here.
Sure. Alex Bakie, Deputy Director of Bureau of Highways. I'll add that we administer the weeded lot program, which you may be familiar with, and we do not currently have any exemptions in that code. So our approach is to partner with Department of Aging, try and find resources where we can assist folks, but ultimately, we're charged with enforcing the code. And we provide flexibility and extensions and trying to work with them. But we do issue citations. And then I will say relative to age, I think among the discussion, it was something that we thought was reasonable, given the shorter timeframe and the physical demands of snow removal versus someone who was getting a neighbor or contractor had some time to work with to abate a weeded lot, that the circumstances were a little bit different in the snow context. But ultimately, that's a policy decision.
Madam Chair? Because in, in my district and the way we deal with constituent complaints and, you know, folks that aren't maintaining their property, I know the county works at length with folks because I have the remaining neighbors who are still very upset that the issues aren't remedied and they're dealing with the ill effects of a property that isn't being maintained, whatever it is. You know, trash, rodents, weeded, high grass, all those things are an issue for the rest of the community, right? So we deal with that all the time. Cars, people living in RVs on driveways, all those things are going on right now in District Two, I'm sure, and every, everybody else's district. So I'm just trying to make sure that we're being consistent in how we think property should be maintained and where the liability falls, what is reasonable. And I'm not sure we're getting there with this bill. You know, some people are just appalled that we would actually find someone. And we're all over the map with snow removal. I'm just trying to understand what is so special about snow removal. You know, when you have elderly parents and they don't live near you, you, most people, if they're lucky enough, have ways to make sure that their parents are maintaining their property. And when they aren't, then we have to bring in services. So I don't, this, people's sidewalks, though, are putting other people at risk. So it's, this is a very tricky issue. I'm just trying to understand.
Yes?
Yes, Mr. Fiedler.
Sir?
It's still your turn.
No.
But we already have this. This is the very beginning of this discussion where we talked about your own property and your own liability insurance for your own property. We have mechanisms in the law for this already. If you fail to monitor your sidewalk and I walk along your sidewalk and I slip and I hurt myself, I put in a claim against your homeowners. We already, that's well-developed. Like, we have slip and fall, the Office of Law does these cases to the umpteenth time every day. So for us to sit there and act like this is some new issue that we've not dealt with before, this is a solution looking for a problem. We had a generational snow event, I don't know, maybe once-in-a-decade snow event, where we had issues, and it's unfortunate, and it stinks. But the question is, is the remedy proportionate to the problem? And I'm going to argue to all of you, it's not. Because this is a disproportionate remedy to a problem that does not occur on a regular basis, and it is something that we all look at and we go, we don't want that, but are we doing the right thing to fix it?
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This will be my last comment. The difference between managing weeds and grass is a big one. I don't know of any PSA that goes out from the medical community for weeding and mowing your lawn. There are PSAs that go out every time there is a heavy snowfall. If you have a heart condition, use caution, if not, don't do it at all. When I was in Sunday School at St. Anne's in Annapolis, my fourth-grade Sunday School teacher dropped dead of a heart attack shoveling snow. It is serious. These big events that we get, you're not picking a daisy, you're not pushing a 10-pound, 20-pound lawnmower. You're shoveling 20, 30 pounds of snow over and over and over again. That's just the heart. If you have a spine or a neck issue, you could debilitate yourself shoveling snow. That's all.
So we can, I think, as we're debating on what is the proper amount, I hope that we can all agree that $10 is not an incentive to anyone to shovel their walk. I think everybody can agree to that. Because, you know, who cares if it's $10? And, well, it's kind of, but people on a fixed income- You know, less likely to have sidewalk, more likely to be maybe elderly, and it's a greater safety risk for them to walk on an unshovelled sidewalk. So we're getting all this. There is a risk for people who have a health problem at shoveling their walks. But guess what? You can hire the neighbor kid to shovel your walk for less than what this fine will be, even if we raise it to $50. You can pay your neighbor kid to come and shovel your lawn, your yard for 20 bucks. I don't know what, okay, I want to be, for the record, Mr. Volkey has already told us all that he has no sidewalks in his neighborhood. So he doesn't have kids coming, my neighborhood, we have a slew of kids who are going door-to-door and coming around, and they have a list that they go around and shovel the walks. So many places with sidewalks, this is not an issue. It's going to be cheaper for you to hire the neighbor kid than it is to pay the fine. So that, in that way, it might be an incentive. If we raise it above $10, you're not going to get that kid to shovel your sidewalk for 10 bucks, but you will for 20 bucks, probably. And so to have that- Not, if you're an age-restricted, you often have, you know, let's work with your HOA on that to get out there. But if you're age-restricted, you're also, you know, you're under that 70, 70 pounds. It's kind of, I don't think it's even protect people from yourself. You keep saying that the, the property insurance, you know, they'll, they'll cover that if somebody's hurt. Well, wouldn't it be nice to provide a, some incentive to do it before we get to the point where you have to sue and get somebody's homeowner's insurance? I mean, I don't want a little kid to get hit by a car because the neighbors didn't shovel the sidewalks for them to walk to the bus stop, you know? I don't want my elderly neighbor nearby to go out to her mailbox and, you know, and she has to walk on the sidewalk in front of her neighbors and she slips and falls and breaks her hip, you know? I know, nobody wants that. So let's try to find a way that can be an incentive that, you know, there's got to be some, some things that we agree on that we can come to. And we're, we have this amendment to vote on, because we haven't voted on this yet, have we? I'm getting lost on this, but I didn't think we voted. So let's vote on this and then we have more time that we can work.
I can wait until after we vote.
Yeah, so.
But, okay, no, my, my thought was, I mean, the, what if the disincentive were the amount that it costs? Because DPW is, the plan is to charge back to the property owner, whether it's residential or commercial, correct? And then add, you know, a whatever, you know, I don't know, whatever the amount that could act as a disincentive. And I know that's kind of what we're arguing. But if you kind of look at those two pieces together, saying you didn't do it, we're going to, and I'm guessing you're, the costs that you would incur from contractors are probably more than the $20 neighbor kid. So, in fact, maybe that by itself is enough to, you know, say, okay, we're, you know, DPW's going to do it, but then we're going to charge you the $75 that it cost us. I don't, I'm just, I have no idea what, what your contracts would look like to, you know, like what, what that charge would be for residential property.
Yeah, we don't know yet. We're, hopefully we'll know soon after we get the proposals in and contractors- Hopefully, we'll know soon after we get the proposals in and contractors selected.
Maybe we.
We don't know the cost. It could be, it could be $500, I don't know. I mean, we won't, we will know till we get that information.
It's kind of, well, they haven't, I will say, I want to give, I do want to say a positive for DPW. I've been seeing your ads about hiring snow contractors everywhere, and that's for the sidewalks and the streets, and so y'all have been doing a great job putting it out there, and I hope you're getting a good response from that.
Well, Madam Chair, I do think, one, I mean, back when this whole conversation started in February or January, whenever it was, one of the things that really was the bottom line was, how do we make sure that the walks are shoveled? We weren't even talking about, you know, punishing or disincentivizing or whatever. We were like, how do we get this done so it's safer for people? And you, you know, DPW has come up with a plan for how we can do this, and that's really, that's really the main thing. So, maybe we can focus on that for now, and, I mean, yeah, we should do something about the $10 fine, but maybe charging it back to the resident, is that, I don't know, maybe that's a, I'm just suggesting that might be a fair place to start. Get the job done, then we don't, then we've addressed the safety concern, charge it back to the residents or the, you know, commercial, whatever, then, you know, then if we've at least, you know, met our costs, and then we can go down, well, did this work as a, you know, disincentive for, or, you know, an incentive for people to shovel? Maybe that's a place to start.
All right, let's vote on this amendment. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 3.
Ms. Radbien. Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Is this the amendment to increase the age?
Yes. Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Madam Secretary.
Motion to hold.
No, I was going to suggest, could I change my vote to, I forgot that we would still have an exemption in place, we would still have the 55 if we didn't pass this. I don't really like, I think I'm getting to the point where I don't like an exemption at all. So, I, but a 70, age 70 is better than 55, so call me a.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 3 has been adopted.
So, we will have talks in the next couple of weeks before the next meeting and see what, see what we can do. So, this, this lives for another, another day. So, Bill Number 7625, as amended, will be heard on April 20th, 2025. Phew, okay.
October 20th, 2025.
What did I say? April 20th? Well, we could do that too, but let's do it on October 20th. Oh, we're going to jump ahead a few seasons. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7725.
Bill Number 7725, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Pay Plan, Positions in the Classified Service Police Department, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure.
Okay. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, Anne Bedowski, our Personnel Officer, Sarah Heffernan, our Senior Class and Compensation Officer, and Ryan Fraser, our Deputy Chief from the Anorundale County Police Department. So, this bill is a personnel reclassification. It decreases positions in the classified service and increases positions in the classified service. It decreases one police communications operator, two position, which is an LM11, one office support assistant, one position, which is an OS2, and it increases one management, one assistant, which is an NR15, and one office support specialist position, which is an OS6. All of those are in the police department. It also creates two new pay grades within the classified service, a P5, which is the equivalent to a police major, and a P6, which is equivalent to a police deputy chief. It only creates the new pay grades, it does not place any positions into the newly created pay grades, and there is an amendment that we can discuss at the appropriate time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. First off, I want to thank you all for sticking around and listening to all the snow removal discussion. We appreciate that because it is late, and so thank you for coming out. Is there any comments? Mr. Smith.
I just want to say, congratulations, Deputy Chief. Fraser, the stars look good on him. Well-deserved, and happy you're in that spot. Thank you.
Yep. So, Mr. Volkey.
I was going to say the same thing to the guy from Riviera Beach, you know, just had to throw a little love in his direction, so.
All right, so, no other comments? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7725. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 7725? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 7725 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7725.
Bill Number 7725, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Pay Plan, Positions in the Classified Service Police Department, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure.
All right, there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, this amendment approves the modification of the pay grade assigned to the existing job classification of Evidence Coordinator in the Personnel Officer's Classification Plan for Fiscal Year 2026, dated July 1, 2025, and decreases and increases positions approved in the Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for the current fiscal year.
That is quite an amendment. All right, Mr. Hunt.
It is. So, basically, it takes a pay grade for the job classification of Evidence Coordinator from NR15 to NR17C. It decreases one environmental control inspection position from the numbers that were improved as part of the budget, and increases one senior inspector position to the positions approved in the annual budget. And it also approves a decrease of one office support assistant two position in Aging and Disabilities, and increases one human services specialist position in the Department of Aging and Disabilities.
May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Volkey, please ask a question. They waited here all night. Let's give them.
Oh, I got plenty.
Okay, go for it.
Shoot from the hip. No, I'm kidding. The amendment, I believe the bill is consistent with what we did in budget, right? Is the amendment consistent with what we did in budget? So, are these just things that were missed when the bill was originally drafted, and you're just correcting it?
Anne Bedowski, Personnel Officer, yes, they are consistent with Bill 424, which are vacant, and this is a vacant, these are all vacant reclasses that are greater than 10% in their movement, which requires legislation. And so, these studies, this amendment came from studies that completed just as the bill was being introduced, and so in an effort not to wait to future legislation, we tried to amend our current bill.
Okay, so then let me unpack what you said for a second. So, the bill itself is consistent with the annual budget ordinance?
With no increase in positions, right?
Bill 7725, that's the reclass bill that has to do with the budget, right?
No, this, 40, it was 45, 4725, I think, was our pay and personnel bill.
Okay.
Right?
So, then 7725 is doing what?
Any changes that we do to the class and comp plan.
That are over 10%?
Correct.
Got it. And so, the amendment is bringing in more of those than what you originally had in the bill? And so, you said they were getting finished up, and now that's why you're adding them?
Yes.
Got you. Okay, all right. I think I understand what's going on now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
Okay, Bill Number 7725, as amended, will be heard on October 20th, 2025.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could we put this one at the beginning of the agenda on the 20th?
Yes, yes. Madam Secretary, please make a note of that so that we don't make them wait all night and sit through snow removal again.
Noted, thank you.
Can we, can we get the police department's position on snow removal?
They would like.
Can you take that back to command?
They, I bet they would like not to be in charge of giving citations for that.
That is correct. We're always the bad guy, so we don't like being the bad guy when it comes to snow, too.
That's right. So, they got to be the bad guy to give tickets to all those people who ignore those things that say, please don't drive unless you absolutely have to. That's what they're spending their time doing, is getting all those people, and schools not canceled. So, all right, thank you all very much. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8025.
Bill Number 8025, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Amended and Restated Lease Between Anorundale County, Maryland and Wiley Bates School LLC.
Okay, and Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Chris Daniels, our real estate manager, who I want to thank for hanging out so long and waiting, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. So, you may remember about a year ago, we passed a bill, it was 6624, that was effective last December, where we approved a revised, amended, and restated lease between the county and Wiley Bates School LLC, which is a, an LLC that was set up by, I believe, Enterprise in order to do some affordable housing at the Wiley Bates School. They never signed the lease, and there were subsequently changes that they wanted to make to the lease, and those changes were substantial enough that it needs to come back before the council for approval. So, I don't know if Chris or Lori have anything else they want to add, but that is basically why we have a bill again for the Wiley Bates LLC.
So, is there, is there any discussion? Anybody have questions? On this lease again, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number, am I right? Am I in the right place? 8025? Okay. It's many pages tonight. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 8025. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 8025? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 8025 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please call, read the title of Bill Number 8025.
Bill Number 8025, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Amended and Restated Lease Between Anorundale County, Maryland and Wiley Bates School LLC.
All right. Any further discussion? So, I just want to stress again that this was, we voted on this earlier, we did it all right on this end, the county did all right. This is some of the outside issues that have come back to us. This is not, this revisiting is not because anything was done in error on our part, correct? Ms. Klosmeyer?
That is correct.
Okay, just makes that sure. Ms. Pickard.
And yet, at the end of the day, we're trying to preserve and create affordable housing in the city of Annapolis, so.
Yes.
Correct.
Keep our eye on the prize as well.
That's right. It's kind of, no, we, no, no problems with this, it's a great outcome, but just want to make sure that this is more of a complicated real estate thing rather than that anything was not done correctly the first time around. So, all right, if there's no other comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8025.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 8025 has passed.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Daniels, for staying so late. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2525.
Resolution Number 2525, Resolution Approving the Designation of Certain Areas Near Glenn Burney Cromwell Light Rail Link Station as a Transit-Oriented Development.
Is Mr., Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, Mark Wildonger, our Senior Planner, Amy Gowen, the CEO and President of Anorundale Economic Development Corporation, and Brian Ulrich, our Planning Administrator from the Office of Transportation. You may remember back in the spring when we were going through comprehensive rezoning, the state put in a request to rezone the property around Cromwell Light Rail Station with the eye towards making it a transit-oriented development. This resolution is part of that process, and I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk a little more about that.
Good evening. Mark Wildonger, Office of Planning and Zoning. So, again, the resolution indicates county support for the state transit-oriented development designation. The designation is supported in the recently adopted Region 1 Plan and other local and regional plans. The designation provides opportunity for state funding, points in competitive application rounds, technical assistance for pre-planning and analysis, to name a few benefits. And again, the designation is just another tool in the toolbox to support the revitalization of the area, encourage development in targeted growth area, and support multimodal transportation.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. What does this designation do to the ability to develop any of the properties that are in the designated TOD under current county code? Like, does it change anything that they could be developed to, anything they can be used for?
Mark Wildonger, Office of Planning and Zoning. This is a state designation. It doesn't, from what I understand, it doesn't prevent any local regulations.
I'm not talking about preventing. I'm asking basically, would any of the properties, so I'm looking at the exhibit, the Exhibit A, that shows the Cromwell TOD, and it shows the dark gray shaded pieces of property that are within the TOD. Do those properties experience any differences in what they are able to do on those properties under the code if this is designated as a TOD?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Mr., Mr. Smith.
I was just going to reiterate, certainly supportive of it. We obviously came to a consensus here early this year with the Region 1 Plan. With the designation, it makes it more attractive and available for grant opportunities at the state level from a resource standpoint, but it doesn't undo or do anything other than what the underlying zoning already allocates for it. It's MXDU, and that's what, that's what it'll be used for. MXDU specifically.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is all of this property zoned MXDU that's in the TOD? Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't think so. I mean, you've got Sawmill Creek Park, you've got Slade, you've got that large piece, which is the county property, right, on BNA?
That's correct. I was, I meant to refer to the train, the light rail station specifically.
Oh, okay.
Is what we did back early this month, but yes.
Okay. Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, if it doesn't, if it doesn't allow the property owners to do anything different with their property, what, what is the motivation behind doing this?
Sure. Mark Wildonger, Planning and Zoning. So, again, is it just affords the county an opportunity to receive additional funding? So, for example, the Odenton Town Center is a, is a state TOD designated area, and the county just was recently awarded $750,000 to assist in the parking garage development. So, with this new designation for the Cromwell Station, it would afford the county to apply then for certain state funding. It would, it would allow them to score potentially a little bit higher on any other competitive applications at the state level. There's technical assistance that's then provided to the county, and I believe any other developers looking to redevelop in that designated area.
So, without this, the county wouldn't be able to apply for those things?
That additional funding, correct.
Make sure I'm connecting all the dots. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So, I, if I'm remembering from the plans that are set out for the Odenton TOD, when that's built out, I think the long-range projections are somewhere around, like, 8,000 units, not 8,000 units, sorry, but 8,000 people in that area. Am I, am I kind of close on that, or am I remembering something wrong? I don't know if you know that.
I don't, I don't.
You don't remember that?
I don't remember.
Okay, never mind. So, that's, that's what I thought it was. I thought Odenton was, like, projected at that longer range. I thought Odenton was like projected at that longer range.
Are you thinking of, at the Cromwell Station when we were talking about the?
No, I'm talking about Odenton's TOD. I'm talking about the Odenton TOD and like the master plan for that area and what that's going to look like.
Don't remember that conversation.
No, I don't either.
I thought I had seen some sort of a plan for the area that suggested that that could grow to roughly 8,000 people in that area, so.
Grow by more than eight, additional 8,000, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what I thought.
I don't remember that exact conversation.
Okay.
No.
I guess I'm just trying to think about this particular community, this particular area, and what the designation of a TOD here will do for this area, and what the potential development could look like if this becomes much denser.
I think with comprehensive zoning that was adopted during the Region One Plan, that's been set. This, the TOD designation doesn't allow for any additional density.
Okay. But we didn't, again, but the first question was, we didn't rezone all of this to MXDU. It was only certain parts of this.
Mr. Smith?
No, just, just to, the governor has, is very intent on trying to assist local jurisdictions and by leveraging TODs as a method and means of focusing resources into those areas. So this, this is the county's self-identification of, hey, this is a, and we have transportation right there, but designate it on the, not only with our alignment with the Region One Plans, but also with this designation, so we can signal to the state, yes, this is an area that we want to receive that additional assistance because we plan to increase housing opportunities in these areas because they are near transportation corridors specifically in this instance. That's, that's all it does.
Right.
Plant a flag, put money here.
Yep. Ms. Pickard.
Well, and currently, the state is engaged in TOD RFPs at Bowie State in that area, and Cromwell is next as one of the state's top priorities. And this is, the Cromwell, the underutilized state-owned property at the Cromwell Light Rail is very much intended for the state to be developing into transit-oriented development, which could then spur the shopping center across the street to reevaluate a redevelopment option, which is somewhat of an underutilized property as well. Transit is there. It's a great opportunity for modern, cool, you know, cool places, as Secretary Day likes to talk about. I welcome the opportunity, and I really do hope everyone can get behind this designation as it's needed. The state needs this designation if they're going to be able to do their own project on state property, is my understanding, which is why we're here tonight.
Correct. So this, the resolution is one of the attachments as part of the application that needs to go to the Maryland Department of Transportation for their approval, and that goes to the Smart Growth Cabinet for their ultimate, they have the authority to approve that.
All right, so we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2525. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 2525? We have all these staff members here. Nobody wants to come up and speak? That's all that's left to our, to our public. So seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution Number 2525 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2525.
Resolution Number 2525, Resolution Approving the Designation of Certain Areas Near the Glen Burney Cromwell Light Rail Link Station as a Transit Oriented Development.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2525.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution Number 2525 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2625.
Resolution Number 2625, Resolution Amending a Portion of Title IV of the Rules or Procedure of the County Council.
So this is my resolution. This is just to make a little tweak, excuse me, this is just to make a little tweak to our council rules that if members of the public have handouts that they would like to share with the, with the council, that they would need to present it to Madam Secretary, and that would be distributed, that they cannot come up directly and leave things on the dais. So this is just a clarification for things. We are, we welcome handouts from the public, but we need to have them go through the proper process. So I hope my colleagues will support this. No comment from the administration, correct, since it's our rules, right? All right, any discussion? Mr. Volkey?
I mean, I get what you're trying to do, and I understand going through the proper procedure, but have we considered what the blowback of this may look like? You know, this somehow we're having a chilling effect on people giving us public testimony? Are we worried about that at all?
No, I am not.
Okay.
Because generally, I will say that, you know, the public does, they come up and said, I have some handouts for them, and they do that, but we have had a couple of instances where people have walked up and are going down the line and putting things, and it hasn't, we don't know what they're putting up here, you know? It could be something else, and so we would rather them go through the staff than them coming up directly to what we have.
Are we worried it's a safety issue, or, like, what's our concern with that? I'm not, I'm just trying to think about how this is going to get turned if people look at this and go, oh, the council doesn't want to get testimony.
No, I mean, we, we make it very clear that people can provide handouts to everyone, so this is just doing the process to just clarify it. So, Ms. Pickard?
Thank you. I do believe we've had an issue with this in the past that got a little out of control, but mainly, it's to make sure that the written testimony that folks want to drop on our seats actually makes it to the public record, for one, but then there are some things. We've had an incident, I don't remember which term it was, but where someone was dropping lists of names.
Well, I remember that.